We want to get started right away, so we don't waste anybody's time. Make sure that we use our time wisely. First on the agenda this morning is a SIRSIA presentation on boards and commission ethics. Counselor Flores, would you like to introduce Mr. Light and set this up for us?
I sure would. Thank you, Counselor Aliff. You know, many of you know that I was in the insurance business for a long time, over 42 years, and one of our greatest, one of our top relationships was, of course, with SIRSIA. We did a lot of government insurance, had several large accounts in the community, and SIRSIA was really our source of risk management. As many of you know, they provide our property and our liability coverage for the city, and we're very fortunate today to have one of their legal attorneys present a presentation this morning, and we welcome Mr. Sam Light in attending today and giving us some direction for the next hour on some of maybe our responsibilities dealing with ethics, our conduct, and maybe the do's and don'ts of the city council, since we are a public body and we're under scrutiny continually. So, on behalf of the city and the city council, we welcome you this morning and look forward to the presentation.
Visit? All right. Again, thank you, Counselor Flores. Mr. President, Council, thank you for having me. Thank you, staff, for the invitation to come visit you this morning. On behalf of our executive director, Tammy Tenoy, and the SIRSIA organization, I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to come and present to you today. We very much appreciate and value our relationship with the City of Pueblo. The City of Pueblo was one of the charter members of our property and casualty pool and has been a member since the early 80s, and we greatly value the opportunity to serve you with your property and casual needs. And so, thank you very much for that opportunity. This morning, I'm going to do a presentation called Suggestions for Success for elected officials. You'll notice in the slides that are being put up on the screen, there's a copy of them at your places, that there's a little bit more to the title. It's Suggestions for Success, and in parentheses, they're reducing the risk of liability for elected officials. I put that in parentheses because the more I have done the trainings and the more we at SIRSIA interact with our members and their governing bodies, we find that by and large, your liability risk centers largely around kind of best practices of how we work together on behalf of our community, how we work together as a governing body. And if we focus on best practices or methods for success as a governing body, then by and large, the liability risks will take care of themselves. That's why I put that portion of the presentation title in parentheses. Just a quick initial comment about my presentation. So, my presentation is essentially suggestions for good governance or best practices that in turn will help reduce the risk of liability for you individually and also for the city. Though I am SIRSIA's general counsel and an attorney, this training session is not intended as legal advice on any specific pending matter. I do invite questions at any time throughout the presentation, but I have developed in doing trainings over the years what I call a pretty good radar for what I call the live one. You know, you may certainly ask hypothetically, but if it sounds like that's the burning question of the day, it's the issue of the day here and now within the city. I'll still give you some suggestions from SIRSIA's risk and liability management perspective, but if you need legal advice or staff support for an item that's going on in the here and now, I'll certainly deflect that to your city attorney or mayor or other staff. Also, one disclaimer, I'm pretty sure that the suggestions that I'll provide from SIRSIA's perspective regarding managing risk and best practices as council members are going to overlap with the suggestions that your city attorney provides to you. I'm sure you have periodic training on legal issues, but if there's any inconsistency between my suggestions, our comments for best practices, and your city attorney advice, that's on me, and please follow the advice of your city attorney. I'm hopeful that, you know, Dan won't call me on Monday and say, "What did you say there Saturday?" My goodness. But I think our suggestions will neatly align with regard to best practices for you all. Just wanted to also point out, in case I miss them later, a couple other items at your places in addition to copies of our slides. There's a one-page handout on quasi-judicial process. Given our time limits today, I'm not going to do a deep dive into the quasi-judicial process, but there is a handout there that gives you an overview of due process requirements and the due process, what we call the due process rules of engagement, which are the special ways of doing business that you need to adhere to when you have quasi-judicial hearings as a city council. And then the other that I'll touch on in a minute when we talk about transparency is a handout that I wrote, which are suggested do's and don'ts for effective use of email as elected officials. Those are my suggested do's and don'ts only. Email is a wonderful tool, a great way to help us do our job, but as government officials, there are certain requirements that come into play with regard to your use of email, including open records requirements and potentially open meetings issues as well. So, I gave you a handout on that. And then finally, at your places is a copy of SIRSIA's Ethics Liability and Best Practices Handbook, handbook, excuse me, for elected officials. It's a book. It may not be at your places yet. We've got it right here. We'll get it to you. This is a handbook that we wrote specifically with you all in mind as members of the governing body. It's an updated edition to a book we first wrote about five or six years ago, and it's written with you in mind to give you suggestions and help you identify risks with regard to issues that are particularly important to you as elected officials. For example, there are suggestions there and identification of issues from a risk standpoint with regard to how the body interacts with itself, how its members interact with one another. There's a chapter on open meetings and executive sessions. There's a chapter regarding the distinction between legislation and administration. Of course, you being the governing body are the legislators of the organization. In every organization, there's a distinction between policy and administration. And a new chapter, social media. If you're active on social media, well, then bless you. Know recognize also that as a government official, there are important legal issues that can come into play regarding your use of social media, so there's a new chapter on that. So, with that, I'll dive into my suggestions. My presentation is organized around suggestions for success, and I'll just go ahead, hopefully my clicker's still going, and start with my suggestion one. No matter how long you've been on the governing body, whether you're newly elected or appointed in the last year or so, or have several terms of office under your belt, I think it's always important as elected officials to recognize and commit to the change in roles that one takes on as an elected official. Yes, we're citizens of the City of Pueblo, right? But we're now not just a citizen, we're a government official. And Mr. President, right, that's a 24/7 job, right? That's the call at 10:00 p.m.? That's the bump into you at 7:00 a.m. at the grocery store, right? Recognize that in the eyes of the citizens and the eyes of your constituents, when they are interacting with you regarding the business of the city, they are always perceiving you as an elected official and a representative of the organization. And that's important for risk management purposes, right? As well as important in understanding that as a government official, certain rules and way of doing business will always stick to you as a government official. Not that we're asked to give up our personal life, but in the eyes of our constituents, we are always government officials when we interact with them. Also, we need to recognize, of course, that we're no longer outsiders to this organization called city government. We're now the ultimate insiders, seven members with the largest amount of power in local government. And so, one must embrace the concept that the outsider perspective does not fit. Sometimes, in our experience at SIRSIA, there will be moments in every organization's ebb and flow that sometimes there are members of the elected governing body or boards and commissions who embrace an outsider perspective and challenge the idea that certain ways of doing business or that certain rules, perhaps ethics rules, process rules, council rules of context, conduct, don't apply to them. But it's important to always remember that as an insider, those rules do apply. Our executive director, Tammy Tenoy, wrote a nice chapter in the book about that concept called the outsider syndrome and how do we as a governing body address that issue if we have difficulty internal to the governing body where there's either friction or perhaps even risk being created, right, when one or more members take an outsider perspective with regard to the rest of the body. Recognize also that no matter what brought you to public service and what issues you were particularly interested in at the time of your election and appointment, the job duties now require that you be a great representative on behalf of your district and the city as a whole with regard to all matters that come in front of the city council. And there is an important risk aspect to that in understanding that the particular items that are of interest to you as council members are the agenda and work plan of the council as a whole. And sometimes that can create friction if there are members who will take a narrower focus, perhaps have an item that's of particular interest to them, but do not have a majority of members that embrace that issue as well. So, part of the give and take of being on the governing body is embracing the agenda of the council as a whole and being careful about creating either risk or friction issues in pursuing agendas that are not endorsed by the entirety of the group, whether that's by a 4-3 vote or a 7-0 vote, right? That's an important piece. Recognize, right, everyone took the oath of office, some of us more recently than others, but we all took the oath of office. I swear to uphold the constitution and the laws of the state of Colorado and the charter and ordinances of the city. We'll touch base briefly here about how that has meaning for you legally, ethically, morally, right? And the oath of office embraces certain commitments that we're all duty-bound as members of the governing body to commit to. For example, the oath of office includes a commitment to respect the boundaries and allocation of responsibility set by law, the concept from a risk perspective that everyone within the organization has a job description, be it the governing body, the mayor, appointed boards and commissions, employed staff, civil service staff, volunteers, and it's important to honor and respect the boundaries around the specific authority that we have to protect yourselves and the organization from risk. Of course, the oath of office also included a commitment to lawful conduct, including following constitutional requirements. Much of your job is setting policy, adopting legislation for the city, looking long-term, doing long-term vision-type things, but one of the jobs of council as well is sometimes you will make decisions regarding individuals' protected property rights. And you'll know that because you'll be having the public hearing about an application involving someone's land or their license. I think at your level, if I understand your ordinances correctly, for council, that's primarily rezoning hearings, subdivision hearings, and liquor licensing, if I have that right. And in that context, you're making decisions about individuals' protected property rights, and we all remember, right, the due process clause, "No one shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law." And for those types of decisions that we make at the local level, and we're very happy we can make them at the local level, we want that power. We don't want someone else telling you how to zone your community, right? Right? But with that power goes the responsibility ultimately of the seven members of council to ensure that applicants that come before you on those property rights matters receive the due process to which they're entitled under the constitution. We'll touch base briefly on that. Of course, as elected officials, you all became subject to the city's code of ethics that governs certain areas of ethical behavior, such as how to deal with conflicts of interest, prohibitions on use of confidential information. There are provisions there about the receipt of gifts by elected officials. We'll touch briefly on what those are as well. Then finally, the oath, maybe this doesn't fall as neatly from the other bullets that I just mentioned, but doesn't the oath of office, when we're elected, to a body that has seven members, but it's only one body, right? Doesn't our oath involve at a minimum a commitment to appreciate and respect each other's differing styles and approaches and ways of doing business, at least enough to work together as a council to get to that one voice of council, right? Your mayor and your staff may be more comforted if you get to that voice by a 7-0 vote, but it's not always going to be a 7-0 vote, but that's okay. That's why we have seven members, right? But working together involves respect for each other's style to get to that one voice of council, because although we have seven members, ultimately, council speaks with one voice. Going back to my earlier slides, when your constituents interact with you, they want to know, "What is council doing? What is council's perspective?" Yes, they will, of course, ask you what your individual view on an issue is. At the end of the day, there is but one council speaking with one voice. Staying at the high level here, recognize also that whatever your role was to the city before you became an elected official, you're now the elected leaders, the guardians, the stewards, the fiduciaries of the city, analogous to the board of directors of a private corporation, municipalities, our corporations, you are. It's board. Staying at that 40,000-foot level, right, one of your primary responsibilities and duties is the protection of the city's best interests and assets at that writ large level, right? And one of the guiding principles in your decision-making should always be, "What's the right thing to do for the city as a city that will stand the test of time?" That's not always easy, right? In some nights, you're going to have a public comment period where you have a small but very vocal group saying, "Council, do this, do this, do this," and you must do it now, right? And you may be thinking to yourself, "Well, if we do that tonight, or if we act on that right away, I'll bet this is going to be back in our lap in six weeks." Or you may be thinking, "Well, this sounds like an urgent issue, but I, this is the first we're hearing of it as council." One of your greatest strengths and prerogatives as a council is to take the time you need and get the information you want in order to make decisions that will stand the test of time. Sure, you're going to change some decisions that prior councils made, and future councils are going to change some things that you've done, but you should always embrace the idea that we as a council, right, have the ability to take the time and get the information that we as a council need, to have a good deliberation and make a decision that we believe will stand the test of time, and that's in the best interest of the city. Sometimes, you're under deadlines. You know, on certain licensing matters or other applications, you've got to act within this amount of time, but if you're in the middle of a very contentious hearing and you feel like some issues have been vetted out, but they're just not fully resolved, or some other information might be important to making that decision, recognize you can continue a matter if you need be. It can sometimes be frustrating to everyone in the room, but that's a prerogative that you have if you need it. Finally, on this suggestion, recognize that as elected leader is part of your oath, part of your job duties is delivering the product of good governance. And I've found over the years in doing my training that if you commit to certain core, really what I would characterize as civics concepts, then by and large, the related risk and liability issues that we help you handle will take care of themselves. And on this slide, I've listed, for example, on the left side, the principles that I'm talking about, and then next to them, the corresponding risk issues. So, by that, I mean if we, as a body and as an organization, commit ourselves to openness and transparency, if we're going to have few, if any, risks, claims, lawsuits under the open meetings law or the open records law, if we commit ourselves to fundamental fairness with everyone who comes in front of us, we're not going to have many due process claims. If we commit ourselves to being predictable, we're not going to see those kinds of lawsuits, right, where someone says, "Well, you violated my right to equal protection," or "I'd like to challenge your decision because I think it was arbitrary," or "I'm going to file a claim for declaratory relief because I think council misinterpreted their own ordinances," right? Of all those, that large book of ordinances you have, right, all those rules that apply to how you do things and criteria for making decisions, you have, by and large, as the legislators, the prerogative to make changes to those rules within legal boundaries, right? But while they're on the books, commit yourselves to applying them even-handedly and predictably, and that'll serve you well. Your liability risk will be reduced, but you'll also, particularly with the business community, build great trust because they will understand that the city is even-handed in its application. You know, it's sometimes the case where the vibe arises, "Well, the rules haven't changed, but now they're being interpreted differently," right? That's a situation where it's important to change the order of doing things there and make the legislative change, right, and before we apply the new policy, right? Many risk notice of claim lawsuits been sent into our offices on the theory that the governing body or the decision-maker was attempting to change the rules without support actually on the books for the decision that they made. Finally, more of a core civics principle, but we found over the years that a commitment to mutual respect is a great predictor, right, of risk, right? It's not easy, and we get that. You're going to have nights where you've got a full house and you've got people coming at you from eight, nine different directions. "This is the decision you ought to make." "No, you ought to make the decision." It's 180 degrees opposite of that, seven, eight different perspectives. If you end up at a spot, right, where the citizens, your constituents, go home and they say, "By the way, that's the situation where, yet again, it's, we've concluded, this is not a job on the governing body where I get to make 100% of the people happy 100% of the time. They're going to walk away from this decision. Someone's going to be unhappy." But if they go home and they say, "You know what? I get it now. Council's got a tough job. They had to take those seven, eight, nine different perspectives. They had to work through all that conflicting testimony and come up with the one decision that was the right thing to do for the city." I may still disagree with the decision they made, but you know what? I feel like I was respected. I feel like it was a good process. I feel like I was heard. That's a great place to be. Setting aside any liability risk builds enormous trust of your organization, of the body, right, and with your constituents, and the liability risks are by and large going to fall away. All right, a little bit of a pivot here to a little bit more of a technical or legal issue. I always, for new governing body members, I always say, "I hope that your first question of your city or town attorney was not, you know, 'Can I get sued in this job?' But the answer is, of course. Government officials are subject to all sorts of potential risks of liability." I just want to explain real briefly again, as a refresher, what your general protections are. And I'm going to talk first about your protection under state law for claims like state tort claims against you. The question from your perspective is, "Can I be sued and be held individually liable for something that I do within the course and scope of my duties as a council member?" Right? So, in Colorado, we have a statute called the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act. A lot going on in that statute, but it, at its core, it basically says that the city, and by extension, its insurer, SIRSIA, will defend you and pay judgments that are entered against you for acts or omissions that you take as a council member. Sounds good, right? Good protection. There's always, there's always a catch, there are always some conditions, right? That protection applies so long as, right, you're acting within the scope of your employment and not acting in a willful and wanton manner. So, there's two interesting phrases there from your perspective. You say, "Scope of employment." Why, "I'm an elected official. I'm not an employee." The concept does apply to everyone within the organization. That's the phrase that's used in the statute, and really, the main takeaway is simply that everyone within the organization has to appreciate what the limits are of their authority and what their particular role within the organization is, because claims can be built upon the allegation that someone was acting outside the scope of their authority. The second aspect of that is willful and wanton, right? That's a legalistic phrase. Willful and wanton conduct is essentially conduct that's intentionally undertaken, that's deliberately intended to injure someone's rights with reckless disregard for what their rights are. I have an even simpler way of describing it. I call it bad stuff, right? So, that's the exception in the statute that essentially, right, puts us all on notice that we shall not use the cloak of governmental authority that we have, right, to do wrong things to people for the wrong reasons. And as long as we understand those, you know, the channel and understand those buoys are there, we're going to be just fine. We'll know it when we see it, right? Bad stuff is bad stuff, and willful and wanton claims are few and far between in Colorado, but they do exist. And the primary risk area where we see them arise is where, particularly with elected or appointed bodies, is where an individual member misperceiving the authority they have, right, attempts to exercise or authority on their own, right, for an improper reason. And that's probably the biggest risk that we see that bubbles up into allegations against elected or appointed individuals. I always feel a little bit like the Grim Reaper when I go through these slides. I have to give you the other half of the potentially troubling aspect of this, and then I'll finish with a silver lining. But recognize that the willful and wanton and scope of conduct concepts also apply to your insurance, right? Because your insurance follows the same principles of the statute. They basically say, "We will insure, provide insurance, and we will cover you, right, as an elected official in your capacity as such, right, or we'll cover you for actions or omissions as an elected official, right, within the course and scope." And so, your insurance follows the same principles, but there are exceptions to coverage for things like willful and wanton conduct, fraud, criminal acts, malicious acts. So, again, it all comes back to, "You're best protected if we just understand, you know, that these concepts of willful and wanton are out there. We know what bad stuff is. We're going to stay far away from it and we'll be just fine." Okay? What I just talked about was the state tort statute. Recognize, I'm sure you're all aware that you're also subject to potential risks of like federal civil rights claims, "Hey, you violated my First Amendment right," those kinds of things. There is a form of qualified immunity for federal claims as well, right? We have all been reading about qualified immunity with respect to police over the last year in Senate Bill 217, but the concept of federal qualified immunity applies to all governmental actors as well and provides you with protection, right, insofar as your conduct does not violate clearly established statutory or constitutional rights, right? If you, question from your perspective is, "Well, how do I understand, right, if we're moving from nice thick ice to thin ice?" Right? That's where your staff, your city attorney's office is there to help, right, identify risk factors. If at all, from your perspective, ever have a question, "Is this authorized?" Right? Are we getting into a risky area here? Always exercise your prerogative to get the answer you need to that question and get advice on, "Do we have authority to do this? What are our risks? What are our options?" Last part of my Grim Reaper slide is recognize if there is actually a finding of willful and wanton conduct under the statute, right? In a very bad situation, an individual government actor can be liable for punitive damages, and under Colorado law, punitive damages are uninsurable. And that's a huge risk factor, right? In a very bad situation where someone's doing the wrong thing for the wrong reasons and they get dinged with civil liability, then they could be responsible personally for the punitive damages. To be fair, there is a provision in the statute that says a government actor can ask the city council if they would be willing to pay the punitive damages. That's a discussion that must occur in a public meeting and done by resolution. That's a tough discussion to have, right? So, the final commitment is just stay away from bad stuff and we'll be fine. I said I was going to end with a silver lining on this suggestion, and I am, which is, right, don't let the fear of liability, on the other hand, drive your decision-making. If we know as a governing body, we're doing the right things for the right reasons through a fair and proper process, then you're going to be just fine, and that's what insurance coverage and risk management is all about, is helping to protect you in that regard. Couple of quick suggestions to help avoid the risk of potential personal liability. Recognize that council primarily does its job as a collective body, right? And that of all those hundreds of pages of ordinances that you have, there are very few, if any, situations where it says the council's power is exercised by one member, right? So, it's a misperception to say, "I have 1/7 of the power, and I'm going to go out and use my 1/7." The power is exercised collectively by council as a whole. Your best protection also is when you do your work, as you primarily do anyway, by meeting as a group and voting on items that come in front of you. You can see right away that it's difficult, more difficult for a claimant to say that, "Well, I'd like to just pick one of you, right, and pursue a claim against you individually and hold you individually liable for something the council did." And your reaction, "Well, I don't understand what you're talking about. That was council decision. All I did was vote with council on the matter. How can I be sued individually?" And that's right, your risk, you're best protected in this room. By the way, there are other privileges that attach, right, to things that you do in this room. There's legislative privilege when you're making quasi-judicial decisions. There are some quasi-judicial privileges that can attach to federal claims, so those are all important concepts. My final to wrap up on my suggestion too is just to point out, you know, this is the SIRSIA attorney kind of emphasizing the point that role discipline is important, respect for allocation of power is important. They say, "Well, what are real-life situations where elected or appointed officials can get in start in potential liability claims on this issue?" And I've given you just a couple of examples of the fact patterns that we see every once in a while at SIRSIA with regard to this. So, sometimes we see an elected or appointed official, right, get named in a notice of claim or a lawsuit because the underlying fact patterns suggest that the official got inappropriately involved in a personnel matter that had already been delegated to someone else within the organization, either to the mayor or another supervisor, or that they become inappropriately involved in some other administrative matter that's already been delegated to staff. It's kind of an interesting aspect with land use, right? All land use matters for zoning and subdivision, council does have a role, but at some point, the council role stops and the continuation of the development becomes an administrative matter, right? And to give you a little example of a war story, development's not always easy. Sometimes, it's a split vote, right? Sometimes, it's a one-vote margin. But as an example of a risk, I had a situation once where very hotly contested development, the vote on the governing body was 4-3, the vote on the governing body was four-three, but the development was approved. From your perspective, that means the final quasi judicial decision has been made. The developer now goes on and deals with staff for the rest of the development. But in this sticky wicket that I had, it was a four-three vote. And my mayor was on the short side of the vote, but went over to the building department a day or two later and said, by the power vested in me as mayor, I'm directing you not to issue building permits. I scrambled to look at the code quickly. I was trying to remember, did I miss something in the code, right? But you can see these fact, these fact patterns are, are there to spot, but we have to make sure we respect the allocation there because that's treading towards, right? A situation where that individual can get exposed to the liability issue. So less important from a liability risk, but important from council's dynamic of how we work together. And we do at SERSA sometimes get the call because an elected official will be calling us to build on maybe a call of the city attorney saying, well, what's the remedy for this? But you have, I think during your council meetings, an opportunity, I think shortly after public comment, for council comments, council commentary, right? As a council, keep your, keep your own radar up, right? That if one of you says to the group, yes, Mr. President, my report is, you know, since the last meeting, I did this. If the reaction of the rest of the members is, you did what? That's an issue for council to embrace, right? And talk as council about what are our expectations? What are our norms of conduct as a council for things that we do outside of the meeting, right? Don't let the, you did what? Issue hanging there, right? I know it can be a difficult decision. It may be hard to identify exactly what roles and responsibilities ought to be. But if a council doesn't have a common understanding of that, I think it can lead to friction and ultimately to potential liability risks. Suggestion three, honor transparency. Transparency is not the term used in the open meetings and open records laws, right? But it's the buzzword. And recognize, as I'm sure you do, that your citizens, your constituents appreciate everything you do to be transparent, consistent with whatever resources you're, you have. Your citizens will applaud the fact that they can go on your fantastic website and find information about the doings of council whenever they like, that they can watch your meetings, right? Commit to doing those things, you'll get kudos for that, you'll build trust for doing that. And the likelihood of claims under open meetings and open records laws will go way down because people, even though they may not be at your meeting every night, they understand that information is available about the goings on within the, within the city. So keep that up. I applaud your efforts. I was poking around online and watching some of your meetings and just clicking through to see how readily accessible things are. And that's a great place to be. So keep that up. I do want to touch this real briefly as a reminder on the core requirement of the open meetings law. I'm sure you're all familiar with that, right? But just as a reminder, there is a lot going on in the Colorado Open Meetings Law and there's a lot of nuances to that and issues will come up every now and then. But again, remember that the core concept of the open meetings law as applied to the city council is that whenever three members of the council have a meeting to discuss public business, that is a meeting that must be open to the public. Simply meeting, a citizen has a right to observe that discussion. The second half of the rule is it, is if a fourth member of the council will be present, or it's a meeting at which you're going to take any kind of action, then it has to be preceded by notice and an agenda and your staff takes care of those things for you. So that's it. That's easy as, easy as pie, right? There are some interesting issues in there, right? What is public business, right? How does it apply to use of email, which I addressed on the handout that you have? A more current issue is, does it apply at all to social media? Where there's a chapter in, in the book about that. So those are some of the issues going on. The open meetings law does not, expressly does not apply to social gatherings, right? Those, you don't give up your personal life. And they also don't apply to one-on-one discussions. But as I note in the email, make sure that you don't let one-on-one discussions become a proxy for the deliberations that you would have in this room as a council. Some other transparency issues I wanted to point out is with regard to social media. Are any of you active on social media, wearing your government official hat? Do any of us have personal social media sites? So recognize that there is a question out there, right? Of if I have a personal site, you want to keep it personal. If it ends up becoming a forum for interaction with you and it starts having the various indicia that suggest it's a governmental site, then First Amendment, right? Issues can arise with regard to your personal site. But my best advice on that is just keep them separate, keep personal, personal. If people want to interact with you about governmental stuff, tell them your personal site's not the place to do that. On your personal site, don't use the category of politician. Don't include the city's logo. Don't say, this is the place to talk to me about all things city, right? You can do those things, it's fine to do that, but you just have to accept the fact that if it ends up crossing over into the world of being what the courts might consider to be a governmental site, then, right? You must administer your site as though it were, subject to First Amendment protections because the court would determine that it is. Okay? Finally, as you know, you're allowed under the open meetings law to have executive sessions. But make sure that you're within an authorized topic and it's council's responsibility to self-police when in executive session to stay on topic. And I'm sure you do a wonderful job doing that. I just watched a video of your calling an executive session, spot on work there. There was a recent case out of our Court of Appeals last year that emphasized the point that when we make that motion, make sure that we provide that additional identification, right? Of what the particular topic is for this executive session and that'll help you in that risk area. All right, let's talk briefly about ethics. So we don't have a, a lot of claims come in that, at SERSA that involve or revolve around an ethical transgression. And in Colorado, over at large, I think there's a high commitment to ethics among state and local governments and all elected and appointed leaders. But we know that ethics issues arise. And it's kind of fun to read about them sometimes in the paper when they involve someone else. And from my perspective, particularly when they don't involve a municipality that's a SERSA member, right? But have to commit ourselves to high standards of ethical conduct. Recognize that as a home rule municipality, you have the power and have adopted your own local code of ethics, right? That's, I think, set forth in, I think it's title, yeah, Title I, Chapter Nine of your code. You want to become familiar with that. You have, through your home rural power, right? vested in yourselves the ability to determine and deal with ethics issues at the city level, right? And that's a nice place to be, to have that power, right? But we have to commit to high, high standards of ethical conduct as well. Recognize that your code of ethics does create potential criminal or civil liability for an ethical transgression. And as I talked about earlier with regard to protection for, under your insurance for tort coverage, your insurance does include exclusions, for example, where the liability flows from ill-gotten gains. So there's a potential exclusion that can apply there. I, I just want to touch real briefly on some core concepts under the code of ethics that I'm sure you're all familiar with, but it's always good to do a bit of a refresher. By the way, the code of ethics, the code of ethics is, is kind of your best friend. It sounds a little off, right? But if we have a good working familiarity with the code of ethics and we understand our ethical obligations and the ins and outs of our own code of ethics, right? It is your best friend. Because having good working familiarity of when you need to conduct yourself a certain way, right? And being able to interact with your constituents when they suggest, hey, this is something that's impropriate from an ethical standpoint, right? Your code defines the boundaries of what's expected, but it also then gives you a point of setting up an explanation when you're subject to potentially unreasonable accusations of ethical transgressions, right? And so whether it's making a disclosure during the meeting or talking with a constituent, you may once in a while, you know, be subject to one of those unreasonable accusations. That's completely often dark board, it's way outside the code of ethics. If we have a good working familiarity, we'd say, no, you know, I'm sorry, I have to respectfully disagree. Our code of ethics says this with regard to conflicts of interest. And my only relationship to the situation is this, which is completely outside of that. And so that's a good piece to help you through those issues. So on conflicts of interest, just again, touch on the core rule. We all remember that when we're in a conflict of interest situation, we have certain obligations as council members. To use an example, maybe the council has on the agenda a new, an application for a new liquor license. Right? You decide those if I'm remembering correctly? Oh, you have a liquor board now? How about, let's go with a rezoning. I think you do those, right? If you're that, if you're, if that property's owned by a business and you're a half owner of that business, right? We know then we're in a conflict of interest situation. Our obligation is to disclose our conflict of interest, recuse ourselves from the discussion and vote, right? And recuse ours and step away from the matter and not attempt to influence the other decision makers, right? With regarding that matter that we have a conflict of interest. So that's the core concept of conflicts of interest. I always remind folks, when you do your disclosure, right? Use that as your opportunity to shine. I've sat through many meetings where the disclosure was, I have a conflict of interest and the person stands up and leaves the room, right? Sometimes what's going on in the room after you leave, right? Everyone's hair on fire, right? Going, what's the conflict? What's the conflict? So I always encourage, even if your code doesn't drill down to that level of detail, is to disclose your particular conflict, right? Because that shows, right? Your constituents, right? Exactly what the issue is and they'll appreciate that, they'll trust you more for being completely transparent and making your disclosure of your conflict of interest. Okay? As you know, your code of ethics says, do not use confidential information acquired as a city council member to further substantial, substantially any personal interest. Sometimes the question comes up, is this confidential, is this not? If it's from the mayor's office, right? You could just ask, is this work product? Is this subject to some other confidentiality? If it's from city attorney's office, you know, it's usually gonna have that privilege and confidential stamp on that. But the confidentiality is owned collectively by the council. And so council, right? Should commit to be on the same page of how it treats confidential information, particularly with matters subject to negotiation. You may have an executive session to give the mayor or other staff negotiation direction, but you will have had a discussion of other confidential information to arrive at your negotiation strategy. So I always encourage before you end that executive session, someone makes the obituary, okay, of all the confidential information that we've discussed this evening, right? Which, if any, leaves the executive session and who are our spokespeople? And that'll serve you well as a council. Finally, you know, though you receive a small monthly stipend for your work on council, it's not the pay and it's not the big gifts that bring us to public service, it's the love of public service and the love of community. Recognize that your code of ethics does have rules on the receipt of gifts, right? That you need to be cognizant of. So much of gifts and staying away from risks is just looking at it with a practical, common sense approach of this gift that someone's offering me is, the context of this seems odd, right? There are, to drill down to a legal level, your code of ethics kind of mirrors what's going on in the state statute, right? Where there are two parts to the rules. Amendment forty-one, which was passed a number of years ago that regulates gifts, has a dollar threshold. And it basically says, don't accept any gift from any one person in any one year of more than that dollar amount, right? But there's a huge caveat on all of these principles and that is, do not accept the gift no matter what its value, right? If it's clear the gift is being offered to you to curry your favor on a vote or to reward you for some action that you've taken. So be cautious in the area of gifts and you'll be just fine there. My last comment on ethics is to recognize that from the perspective of the body, right? Every, every ethics issue begins as a personal choice. Do I have a conflict? Do I recuse? Do I have a conflict? No, I don't, I'm gonna stay in, right? If, if we, if you make a call one direction, the issue always stays a personal issue. But recognize that in close calls, debatable calls, right? I will sometimes, even though it may end up that it's absolutely proper and correct legally, right? To reach this particular conclusion, that once you make that other choice to continue on when you do have an expectation potentially of some other situation, that that no longer is a choice that affects just you individually, right? It may affect the body, it may affect the decision that it makes, particularly if it's a close call on the decision. So be conservative in matters of ethics and you'll be just fine and it'll build great trust in your community. All right, honor, my next suggestion is to honor due process. As I remembered, you know, I think everyone wraps their, can wrap their arms around the due process clause. No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. That's so much about, that's the foundation, I think, of our quasi judicial training, right? Is to emphasize the point that yes, under our charter and code, we are the legislative body. We do most of the legislative activity, but on occasion, we are asked to act as judges. And the due process clause applies to you in that context, just as if you were judges in a court proceeding. Yes, it's a little less formal. Yes, we use the word quasi, right? But it's still judicial, right? And the expectations in the quasi judicial process is that we as a council are only gonna decide this matter through a public hearing process where every interested party gets notice, the council's gonna hold a hearing, and that we're gonna make a record-based decision based only on the evidence that's presented to us. And the decision's gonna be based on the pre-existing criteria that are in our code and we are going to be fair and impartial decision makers. And that's it. That's what the due process clause expects and requires. And we want to make a high commitment to honoring due, due process because we want that power. Right? When you're, if someone follow, files a challenge to your rezoning, right? The district court judge is not there to say, you know, I don't think commercial business was the best zone district. I would have put it in the downtown core district. That's not their job, right? And we don't want that to be their job. You want to make and have the power to make local land use decisions, but with that goes the obligation to ensure proper process. Because what judges do look at in legal challenges, and it's human nature, they're judges, they look at how you conducted yourself as judges, right? When you made that decision. So a couple of tips for best practices with regard to due process matters. Make sure that you consider those matters only at the duly noticed public hearing, right? If the record or evidence comes in that there were side conversations or there was discussed outside of the hearing or that there were meetings with people who were interested parties, right? That's a path to potential liability from a due process standpoint and a path to having your decision overturned. Remain fair and unbiased, right? Don't make up your mind in, in advance. You know, just a little humorous, but it wasn't for the particular entity that was involved. But it emphasized the point, you know, for the controversial rezoning that's coming up on council's agenda and let's say it's a rezoning to industrial, you don't want to be the council member quoted in the paper saying, you know, I will never vote for another industrial rezoning, right? I had just that fact pattern elsewhere in the state. And, and we want you to stay in the game, right? But staying in the game requires that you be fair and impartial, that you not, right? Be in a position where you can potentially expose yourself to a claim of prejudgment or bias going into a hearing. Because the natural thing that'll happen from a legal perspective, right? Is potentially the applicant or the opponent or the proponent, whoever's on the opposite side of the, of the, of the communication that went on or the conduct that went on could say, well, I think this council member needs to step aside, recuse themselves because of bias or prejudgment, right? Don't engage with one side or the other outside of the hearing. We got a fancy legal word for that. It's called ex parte communications. It's simply the concept of, you know, thou shall not engage with the interested parties outside of the hearing. And I touched more on that on the handout. Another dynamic we see going on is remember you're the, you're the judges, right? You don't want to be a witness in your own hearing, right? But you may be thinking, well, there's some facts that I know, right? Sitting here listening to this application that nobody's talked about and I'd like to say something about that, right? But you don't want to be a witness in your own hearing. Does that seem fair? Right? If I was a witness, what if, what if you gave such blockbuster testimony, right? Then you, as the judge, turn around and say, well, I'm, I'm disinclined to vote for this rezoning because of the excellent testimony of myself. Right? So that's a risk factor for you. But there's a simple solution to that for you all and that is, right? Use your prerogative to press the interested parties to answer your questions and provide you the information you need. Even to the point that if you need a continuance so that more information can be provided to you, then ask for that, right? If you've got a rezoning and the crux issue is the potential traffic demand, right? But you still have questions about staff's traffic analysis and the applicant's traffic analysis, absolutely within your power to say, I'd like to continue this and here are the issues that I would like the applicant staff to be prepared to handle at the next session of the public hearing. And that'll serve you very well than the, than the flip side of risk of getting overly involved in offering evidence yourself. Finally, embrace deliberations. Quite often, your packet will already do that for you. And if it's a routine matter that's not controversial, where there's not a lot of deliberation and debate, simply adopting a motion to approve the ordinance is already built on the staff report. So that's already getting all the reasons for the decision in the record. But sometimes, what if, I don't know if you have this that often, let me know if you do, but sometimes- But sometimes, what if, uh, I don't know if you have this that often, let me know if you do, but sometimes you may go contrary to the planning commission recommendation. Or sometimes you may still embrace a recommendation of denial, but for different reasons, right? You want to make sure you make the effort to get that on the record. And use what I call Sam's rule of why, right? If you have a public hearing and it's great public hearing, good testimony, conflicting testimony, we know it's gonna be a close vote. Um, if one of the members of the governing body says, well, I'll start the discussion. I just want everyone to know upfront that I'm gonna vote no. I I just don't feel good about this, right? Or I just don't like it. We can always make a good record if we challenge each other as members of the decision-making body by saying why. Why don't you like it? Well, I don't think it's compatible with the neighborhood. Well, now we're getting somewhere, because now we're developing through our discussions with each other a record of why we're voting one way or the other and how our criteria apply. Right? So that council member says, I'm gonna vote no, I I don't think it's compatible. And then someone else will say, well, why? What's your view on the compatibility issue? Well, the surrounding properties are this and that. Then someone says, um, well, with regard to compatibility, what's that criteria really mean? And now we can ask staff for assistance and we're making a great record. So we, from Sersa's perspective, in helping you defend your decisions, we love it when you debate it, right, and deliberate on the tough questions, right, that are the crux of your uh decision. Okay? Finally, suggestion six, use your power wisely and uh humanely, right? Recognize that with respect, for example, to your um direct reports, your staff direct reports. Um, that though we are a body of seven members, we are not a group of seven bosses, right? Um, that council ought to commit to speak with one voice in giving direction um to mayor, staff, or others that directly report to the council. That really is a, an issue that the council as a council owns. I know that sometimes it's tough. Sometimes things aren't ripe. Sometimes we have a discussion and we say, let's uh give the mayor some direction and we have one, two, three, four, seven different views of what the direction ought to be. And uh, you know, some, maybe it's looking at our watches at that point and the president says, mayor, do you have your direction? That is an an issue. Maybe it's not ready yet. Maybe it needs to be continued. Uh, the president and the president's wisdom looks at that and says, hmm, maybe this is something that needs a little time. And maybe we can get to consensus, but maybe not tonight. But however you approach those issues, embrace the fact that it's up to council to sort out and reconcile the different priorities of uh its members. As a council, commit to no surprises approach. So much of my liability suggestions are built around the concept of you're protected as an individual when you look at the role uh and the issues in terms of we, or things that you wanna get done, you look at in terms of we. It does sometimes lead to disappointment. Sometimes the item that you may want to be in the work plan is not embraced by three other members, right? But it's a, then requires that one shell of their particular issue in view uh of the priorities of the council. And then finally, deal effectively with discord. We, over the years at Sersa, have recognized that every governing body, from every member that we have, no matter how large or small, is going to have moments when there's discord uh among the members of the elected or appointed bodies, right? Um, but in that regard, it's a wise council that finds the time and space to discuss and try to work through the issues of discord, no matter what they may be or wherever they may come from. Um, because sometimes from a risk standpoint, if those issues go unintended, they can result, right? Into potential disputes, maybe potentially a claim, certainly questions to the attorney or staff, or what's the legal recourse of this? And by the time it becomes a claim for which we get a notice of claim, uh, maybe there's a legal solution to it. Depends on what you say have in your code, right? Um, but a a wise council will spot those issues early and say, is there any way we can resolve this? Maybe not, but doing things like identifying norms of conduct can can help uh if there are those tough tough issues. Lastly, recognize, particularly in the civil rights world, um, that uh tone and temperament are important. That you do set the tone uh for the entire organization that um in the world we live in today, sometimes that's not easy. It feels like you have a target directly on your front or back and people are trying to do things that sometimes just to see if that can push your buttons one way or the other. But in public uh service, there is a risk aspect that does s- in some ways get influenced by tone and temperament and how we conduct ourselves with constituents and the um public. So uh be 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 careful in that regard. Make sure you have techniques for dealing with difficult uh situations. If it's in a meeting setting, it's perhaps a recess or or what have you. Finally, uh, as my presentation suggests, to wrap it up, commit yourself to best practices, right? And high standards of personal conduct. Always keep in mind, right, going back to forty thousand foot level, that you're the stewards or guardians of the city's best interests and that. Assets. And with that, thank you very much for the opportunity to come present on behalf of Sersa. Thank you very much for your public service, for your membership. We greatly value our partnership with you. Um, there's a couple of slides there with some other uh resources, a little bit more about Sersa as a takeaway from Sersa's perspective. As um your staff uh well knows, we are there as much or as little as the city would like to help with your risk. Risk management needs, yes, we handle your bread and butter. Claims, getting your insurance coverage is in place, getting the certificates of insurance issued, getting defense counsel uh and adjusters lined up when a a claim is turned in to us for us to handle. Um, but if there are other areas where the organization feels that we can assist, please feel free to reach out. We're happy to do that. On the other hand, if you would like us just to handle the bread and butter stuff, uh, that's uh just fine with us as well. So.
Thank you, Mr. White. Uh, hopefully we don't see you again for two or three years. We keep Sersa out of our uh, out of our city. But no, that was a great presentation. Any comments or questions for Mr. Sersa? Um, Counselor Schelling?
Mr. Sersa, um, I just wanna go through a couple of things that I think I heard. One is pretty much anything we do legal, it's all Dan's fault. Um, the other thing I heard necessary is, and I think we practice this, it's kind of an unwritten law here. You leave our guns and egos at the door when you come to these meetings. We're on TV, which transparency helps us tremendously um to keep things simple, open, and honest. And and so far, I think it's worked out real well. The other thing I heard was, and I'm glad I have no Facebook, I have no social media at all. But we have to watch our emails and and phone calls and your phone can be taken away or or that's just crazy. I've got a flip phone, so.
No messages.
Uh, you said, this confused me. You said, if three people meet, that's not lea- that creates an illegal illegal situation. I always thought it was two of us, no more than two of us can meet. Are we saying the same thing? Three's illegal and two's okay?
Right.
Okay, thank you. That's all I've got. Thanks. And thanks for your time and coming down.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Flores?
Yes, thank you. Thanks. That was a great presentation. Uh, I, sometimes I feel like it's what we don't do, uh, sometimes that may get us in trouble. And, uh, you know, we have public forum, we have rules uh and what we allow uh the public not to get into. You know, going after, naming a director that they had a bad experience with or uh, you know, going after uh, you know, people uh by their comments and uh being televised, it's like trying to unring a bell. Sometimes they they cross the line, but I think we have an obligation at some point to point out that uh people that do come up to public forum may be out of order and uh maybe we need to be quicker about that. Uh, that also, what also concerns me are our boards and commissions. We have lots of what I consider vicarious liability exposures, because people are making uh decisions, financial decisions on our behalf and recommending those to us. Ultimately, we we do that. Uh, but it's possible that uh uh these people will will uh disseminate information that they discovered in uh in their vetting of of whether to allocate money or not.
Right.
And uh that concerns me too, but I think that we we have an obligation to maybe stop individuals uh from going too far in uh maybe defaming or libel, libeling or slandering people. And so we we have to be careful with that. And I don't know if you could talk about our obligation, I guess, to to have a much stronger, a tight uh process so that we kinda nip that in the bud.
Well, with regard to, if you're talking about your advisory boards and commissions, we, you know, recommend training for them and same principles. We try to emphasize when we do those trainings for them, though, though the role may seem informal. Uh, and you may feel like you're just making a recommendation that you are still government officials and your words matter. Um, and can create, even if not ultimate liability, can create consternation. So for them, the light is always on as well. Uh, the other dynamic for them is recommending bodies or advisory bodies is to remind their members. Um, you know, often it's with the best of intention, but uh individual members may um wanna speak for the group. But they may be getting ahead of the group or ahead of the council and maybe trying to predict outcomes that aren't certain outcomes. And that can be a risk factor, if not at least a source of friction. On um the issue of uh public comment, we do see every now and then, you have to be careful about uh enforcing rules of decorum. Um, that you're not engaging in impermissible speech regulation, right? Because from the First Amendment perspective, standing up during public comment, right, to speak to your elected leadership is, you know, one of the highest, most protected forms of petitioning your government for grievances, right? Um, so if you do have decorum rules, you wanna be absolutely certain, right? Uh, that everyone's on notice of those, that the conduct actually does violate the rules of decorum, that they've been warned uh repeatedly. And quite frankly, by the time that bets itself out, maybe they're done with their three or five minutes anyway. And so you just uh don't even respond and just move on to the next speaker. I've found that over the years, a lot of times with a very emotional public commenter, uh, that engagement is where things can go wrong. Yes, they are engaging. They are with you. This is the opportunity where they can say something and petition to you. But the First Amendment's clear that, you know, viewpoint regulation, right, you have to be very cautious of that. And most entities, public comment, it's, what are the rules on content? Be careful.
Uh, Counselor Brown?
Since the uh role of councils changed a little bit with the mayor?
Yeah.
Has our liability been reduced somewhat?
Well, you know, I think under uh both forms of government, you've had a delegation, right? And uh of executive and administrative authority. And so from where you sit individually, I think it's a, just a continuing commitment to honor the delegation and make sure we understand what's reserved to council and what's been assigned or delegated to the mayor, right? Maybe an example that helps is um, I understand for the the mayor's executive appointments, right, they're subject to your confirmation. But otherwise, they're supervised by the mayor. So you have a very limited role in that regard, right? Um, in their writ large level, um, all those things, and I'll ask Dan if he wants to add anything further. Recognize that the provisions in your code that make these delegations and assignments are also there to protect you. Right? Because in a worst-case scenario, when we're dealing with the claims and the depositions and the defenses, we're gonna point out that, hey, claim it, there there was no reasonable basis for you to believe that uh an elected official promised you that or that elected official really did that, because it's clear from your ordinances and charter that they had no power to do that. So as long as we, you know, honor those principles in fact, right? And the principles on paper are also gonna serve to protect you. So I hope that's helpful. I don't know, Dan, if you wanna add further?
Yes, first of all, thank you for a great, great presentation. Um, I I think you've looked at our charter and I have to believe it's one of the longest charters in the state of Colorado. It it goes into great detail. Um, but the separation of power between the mayor and city council, and that's the subject of one of our discussions today, is really very clear. So usually I uh uh don't like long charters. I, you know, our charter's longer than the federal constitution. Um, but in this case, it's very helpful, because it really delineates what the role of the mayor is and what the role of council is.
Yeah, yeah, and that that forty thousand foot level is very clear in saying that the council is the legislative body and the mayor is the executive head of the organization, right? And then you have powers and duties listed there confirming that executive functions rest with the mayor and mayor's office. I think you have, like many home rule entities have, um, I call them just for sake of reference, the non-interference clauses. Um, but they basically say that the elected governing body deals with the administrative service through the mayor's office, right? And there's a question in there that, you know, well, what does that mean? What what does it mean I deal with the admin, right? Can I ask a department director a question, right? And whether it's manager or mayor uh form of government, there is a clear distinction between what's appropriate and what's not appropriate. And you can hypothesize scenarios around, well, I shouldn't do that or shouldn't do this, right? But it not there to inhibit um flow of information that you need, but it is a line of distinction that needs to be recognized, right?
Right.
And it gives you a a point of contact, right? If you're um have that single point of contact, then you can provide your voice to that single point of contact. That gives you certainty, credibility, accountability with regard to council's direction.
Right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's it's clear as mud. Uh, Counselor Aguilera?
I don't know if uh the issue that we were gonna talk about later, but it would seem to me it would be appropriate uh to talk to you about it. But we have, we got this one sheet and it says that the council and its members shall deal with administrative services solely through the mayor. And neither the council nor any member thereof shall give orders to any subordinates uh of the mayor, either publicly or privately. But um, I uh, I I I disagree with that. I think uh that we should have an opportunity to visit with any, any of the uh people that work for uh that are head of uh departments and stuff. We just can't tell them what to do. We can't tell them to do something, but we certainly can't call and make an appointment and visit with them about any issue that we choose, I would think.
Well, my my radar is up, um, but I have a couple of thoughts. Um, and it's an issue that sounds like you'll be working through later today. There's clearly a distinction between a visit and an order, right? Um, there is expectations that council has about how they get information from our perspective, because I get the calls once in a while uh from elected uh officials or staff, is the dynamic of, well, we have uh certain members who are putting more of a demand on resources, right, by individual activities than um either the CEO thinks is desirable or other members of the governing body think is appropriate. And that's an issue that has to be worked through. I think it's on the governing body then to develop what is their norm of conduct regarding use of those resources. Um, recognize that almost every home rule, I, in my experience, does have that sort of provision. And there is a clear line, right, between uh a request for information and an order. Um, and also have to appreciate the impact, right, of input from a governing body member, right? Uh, from the reception of the staff member who's receiving that visit, right, from their perspective, they're saying, this is a council member visiting me. What am I to take or do with this visit, right? And that can be a thorny issue to to work through. So the provisions are there. They can only be amended by amendments to the charter. And there is a distinction that has to be recognized, right? Uh, and you have to wrestle through, when do we get into an area where it's really in order? And recognize it's not as simple as just saying, well, this wasn't in order, because it could be perceived as such. I hope that's helpful. I'm, you know, we're gonna spend some time on that. I don't know how much time you set aside for that issue, but I hope, you know, maybe I'll queue it up or not, but I hope that's helpful.
Thank you.
Our our defense attorneys, they will set up those provisions in your in your defense, right? When we get accusations, particularly in employment context, that one member of a governing body promised me something or did this or that. And we'll just say, you're you're putting too much stock into that. And there's a legal basis for that too, because the charter says that no one member, right, can give that kind of order. So your claim is all all wet for that and other reasons. So.
Counselor Warner, do you have anything?
Do. Um, I actually kinda wondered what world you were living in when you said that you felt that government officials had a high sense of ethics in Colorado. I wondered if you had tort restrictions and also how many um claims you actually handle in Colorado.
Um, so with regard to, I apologize if I'm misunderstanding the question, but in general. but in general, CERSA handles a couple hundred liability claims each year on behalf of its members. With regard to ethics issues, the ones that actually bubble up into third-party liability claims, where the underlying theory of recovery is an ethical transgression, those are very few and far between. They typically arise in the quasi judicial setting where someone says, particularly if it was a close vote, that this decision needs to be overturned because there was a member who participated, notwithstanding a conflict of interest. And we'll go down the path of trying to defend those, figure out what the facts are. If it was a transgression, then we have a problem and we need to think about how we resolve that case. Can we resolve it by settlement if it's a really bad case? If we have defenses, how and when do we assert those defenses? So from a claims perspective, it's not that common that we get those. From reading the papers, it's, you know, we, we see these ethical issues crop up, but in the claims world, it's not every day. I hope that addressed your question.
I suppose so. I, I think that ethics a lot is looked in a subjective kind of fashion. Thank you.
Yeah. And thank you for that comment as well. I appreciate that. I, ethics, we can do a whole different session on that. It's a multi-hour topic on itself. But it does suggest the best practice when you have an ethics issue that you're fronting is, I think, in determining what the appropriate course of conduct is, looking at it, you know, outsiders will look at it subjectively as well. But if we're the member of the governing body that's looking at what's the appropriate course of conduct, I think it's a good suggestion from best practices standpoint is try to analyze it both subjectively. You know, what are my views? What, how do I feel about the situation? And then try to get some detached input on what the situation is. I know, you know, your city attorney is vested with authority to issue advisory opinions. I don't know how often that's used, but something less formal than that as well, you know, bounce the issue off a trusted peer or colleague or fellow member and say, what does this look like from your perspective? Does it look like I'm heading into an appearance of impropriety that's going to be troublesome? Do you think this is an actual conflict? So analyzing ethics from both subjective and objective perspectives is helpful. Thank you, council member.
Yeah, probably, probably a good reason for a city council to have their own attorney as well. Thank you.
Mr. Light, thank you for this very important information. I would suggest to us as a council that are on boards and commissions, that we share this outline with the board presidents, the board chairmans, and maybe they can share them with the members. I'm with Counsel Flores on this, that it's, you know, serving on boards and commissions. I don't think that they have the same mindset that we're given when we, when we look at this, you know, and, and I think it's important that they realize that they're an extension of the city and once they become a part of that board and need to, need to be a part of that. So this is very good information that we need to share with everybody within our organizations.
Sure.
Counsel. I just wanted to make a quick comment, and that is that boards and commissions are provided coverage under our policies through CERSA. And you would be available to actually make these presentations to boards and commissions. So I just wanted to say that.
Great. So thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Coming here this morning and we appreciate you and we appreciate everything CERSA does for us. We're going to take five minutes. Everybody had some coffee. We'll be back in five minutes. Thank you, Mr. Light. Okay, if we can get everybody back in here, we'll get started. It's so we can stay thirty minutes behind. If we can stay thirty minutes behind for the day, we've accomplished something. Counselors Schilling and Atencio, are they back there? All right, we're ready to get rolling again. We're going to move into the second part of our, the second item on our agenda, which is goal setting. And I know that Chief of Staff Solano is going to, going to lead us through this process. Her first slide is, is one that I was going to start with. And I just want to, I want to read this. Do you have a slide? Will you put that up? Because I want to read the first part, which I had earmarked two weeks ago. And actually, two years ago or three years ago. But in our city charter, it states that city council will establish and adopt by ordinance or resolution five-year goals and one-year objectives for the city, which goals and objectives shall be reviewed and revised annually by the council. In doing so, council shall consult with the mayor, seek advice from appropriate boards and commissions, and hold one or more public hearings before adopting or revising the goals and objectives of the city. This is a city charter, which is something that we are beholden to. This is something that we are told is one of our responsibilities as a city council. I'm in my fourth year on city council and we've not done it once. It's, so it's very important that I, that I think that we go through this process. We begin and we set an example for all the city councils to come after us. There's four of us on this council right now that may not be here next year, two for sure, two maybe. So we need to set an example and move forward and, and make, make incoming councils know that this is a serious, serious part of our jobs. You know, you, you always hear the, the one-liners or the old adages, you know, is I never failed. I never planned to fail. I just failed to plan. How do I know where, where I'm going if I don't know how I'm going to get there? All, all those come into goal setting and to planning. And, you know, we should have definitive goals as a council that drive us every single day in our positions. Let me tell you a little bit about this process that, as I see it, and then you can, as we go through this, you'll be able to ask and participate, obviously. But nothing's off the table. Whatever you, as a city council person, thinks is important and something that you want to see happen within the city, now's the time to get it out there and to put it in writing and to, to make it concrete. So all of us can take a look at it and, and make moves on it. As we move through the presentation today, I think at the end of the day, we're going to come back to our goals that we've, that we talked about this morning. And this afternoon, we're going to see if we want to redefine them based on the presentations that we've seen or any other information. And then obviously, because this has to be done by ordinance or resolution with public input and input from our boards and commissions, there's going to, going to be some changes that we go through. And this is going to become a process. So I don't believe, and I don't think that any of us should have an expectation that at the end of the day, we're going to have five concrete goals for the city of Pueblo that we're going to move forward with, but we'll have the framework in place for us to move forward. So with that, I'm excited. This is probably the most exciting part for me today. So, Ms. Solano, you want to take over?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Council and Mayor, what I brought for us today is just reference information, some guiding documents, a little bit of, 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 of some research about the hierarchy of vision, goals, objectives, critical success factors and some key performance indicators and then metrics and measures. So it's just a, a short PowerPoint presentation that we can go back and reference, but this is really about all of you sharing today. And so I think we'll just, I'll go through the first few slides. But I wanted to start with boards and commissions and Mr. Lights and your comments about training for boards and commissions. I think the mayor referenced last week the change to coordination for our city boards and commissions to his office with Alyssa taking the lead. And a lot of it was to improve communication for her to be able to get out and talk to them in different meetings and to recruit, you know, the citizens. We have so many vacancies. Well, one of the requirements annually is for them to, to go through the training that CERSA just provided. And it is electronic for them and they did have access to it. It's part of our annual CERSA audit. But it will be, we've also developed a, a distribution list of all current boards and commission members. So it's easier to communicate with them directly from the mayor and/or Alyssa or the mayor's office. So that's just the update. And I think we can still schedule some training with them, different individual boards and commissions going forward. Okay, the next piece of reference information that I, I have, and Counsel Winner also has the PowerPoint at home and we will also have information for her today. You have in front of you, I think, I think, if, I know that you don't want to arrive at consensus, but if we could, by the end of the day, you each have five of these. I only have four in front of you, but we have five. If there's, you know, areas that we put up here on these boards later in the session and somewhere during the day, if you're certain that there's a priority, one, two, three, four and five, that you want to place your sticker next to, it will help us by the end of the day, at least look forwards coming to what is council collectively thinking might be, you know, the, the top five priority areas for goals and objectives for 2021 and then for five-year goals moving forward. Okay, you referenced the charter and the next slide, oops, let me go back. Okay, you referenced the charter and the next slide, oops, let me go back, references the budget. When you passed the budget the first week of December in the budget book on the city council page, it actually adopts the mission statement, the vision statement, and the values of city council. And I don't know that, I need to read any of this to you. You have a copy of the PowerPoint in front of you where you can take notes on, so we can just go right through it. But I did include, if we need to go back and reference any of it, I included the slide for the mission statement. It's, it's rather long. It's a two-slide information. Mr. Chairman, do you want to stop to read any of it, or shall we keep going? Okay, and so they're there for you to have reference if you needed through discussion today. The next is the vision statement that I attached for reference. And then I did want to stop a minute on, on going through the difference between goals and objectives. We speak about them typically interchangeably. But in, in retrospect, goals are generally general. They're intangible. They might be broad. They might be abstract, and they are strategic. But the objectives that you want to address and achieve this year are specific. They're measurable. They're more narrow in scope. They're concrete with respect to how they're written. And they are technical in that they're able to be accomplished. In the hierarchy of how we move through the year with respect to falling under the vision and then goals, and then the objectives, and it all feeds up underneath the broad vision. And a CFS and KPIs are critical success factors and key performance indicators. So what is, what are the benchmarks? So, you know, what are we measuring for the year to say we're on track in meeting the objectives or moving towards the goals that, that you've set for the council? And the last is, of course, the data. And as we really migrated to hopefully moving towards collecting more data and using data in making decisions, that there's an opportunity in the objectives and the goals that you established that we will find surveys, we'll collect other data to show success by collecting metrics and measures. So that's another good reference point to use for today. And as we think about setting the objectives, particularly not so much the goals, the acronym of SPART, that our objective should be specific. And what specifically do we plan to do? They should be measurable. How much are we measuring and how often? They really should be achievable. So we just don't have pie-in-the-sky objectives, but they're, how confident are we that we are able to accomplish our goal, in this case, our objective? That they are relevant to falling under the umbrella that we saw or the hierarchy? What is this goal? Is it worthwhile? Will it meet your needs collectively? And what is the timeframe? So you just don't set it objective, and then it's open-ended. So we know those benchmarks, and we have reporting and data to come back and assess that we met the objective. We need to modify it. We need to delete it. Somehow, we have a measurement with respect to the entire year's activity for one objective individually or all collectively. And that's all of the slides that I put together, because now it's time, I think, that we take notes. Alyssa and I are going to take the notes as you tell us to throughout the session. And it's really your discussion. And Mr. Mayor, you also have the same priority identification labels, but we are ready to follow your lead, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I think we, I think we can do this as a free-for-all. I guess I'll, I'll get, I'll break the ice, okay, to get everybody going. I would like a goal of five thousand homes built in five years. That's five home, five thousand homes developed in five years. And secondly, a zero budget deficit within five years. Anybody else? Ray?
It always might sound like I'm beating a dead horse, but I really would like to try to find a CDOT or somebody to help us improve the, the vision or the landscape of the property from Northern Avenue to Pueblo Boulevard. It's a, it's a nine sore in everybody's mind. And if we have a company big enough to invest five hundred million dollars, we certainly should be able to find the money to improve the quality of the, of the landscape there by putting up a fence or something, because it looks terrible. And and my number one deal is always is to build a, a community recreation center. I, every, every community from here to Wyoming has has a facility for the young people in their community. And I'm saying young people, but truthfully, when Chris Nichols and I went up to Northern Colorado, the first morning that we got there and we went to their swimming pool, there were, there weren't kids in the pool. There were fifty adult females doing water aerobics. And I think that's the kind of facility that we need, one that provides opportunity not only for our kids, but for elderly people, for them to be able to exercise. I don't know if I would so much want to actually get a vote for this issue today. But what I'd like to do is to see if we could find a way to identify the, the money that it would cost to build one. So those are my two big issues. Actually, the recreation center wouldn't even be in the best area. I would hope hopefully we could provide the opportunity for the downtown area. And I think that a recreation center for the downtown area would be a big infusion for the development of pedestrian living in the downtown area. And so that's my, those are my two deals.
Those are great, right? Dennis?
Yes, I, I've actually memorialized my feeling about the rec center. And I'm not going to go over what I, what I've got here, but what I do, so I'm, I'm all for a asking Pueblo Urban Renewal Authority to do the study to obtain the information that we need to make a logical decision of what we do. So this year, I would like for that, that study to be completed, you know, by Pueblo Urban, you know, to answer the questions that I've, that I've touched on, which is, you know, how are we going to integrate the, the aquatic center, which is an RTA project, and the rec center? If that's, makes sense. You know, potentially using, you know, it's going to be very difficult to, to tax the taxpayers for this project. So I'm trying to leave that out of the equation. But I think that we should look at maybe using our collateral, like the parking structure. Our first parking structure is paid free and clear, and we, you know, it's, I mean, it's a perfect time to be borrowing money. And we have very little debt as a city. So we need to see if we can, you know, get our arms around what we need to do to make this happen. And so all I'm, all I think that we can do right now is just ask Urban Renewal to do the study for us.
As I mentioned when we began this, I think a lot of this will come into light by the end of the day. So by the end of the day, we'll be able to come back to this on those specifics. And you'll have a lot more answers than questions.
Right.
And then we can, then we can fine-tune.
Okay, can I, can I go ahead and give you some other? You know, and I won't go into any detail, and you've got the written, my written report on it. But I really, I have been talking to Colorado University through their Leeds School of Business. And there isn't a front-range city that does not utilize their economic indicators. City of Boulder, Fort Collins, Colorado Springs, El Paso County. And I, sometimes I feel like we make decisions as a city council, you know, by our opinion and not so much by data. So what I want to do is develop a relationship with UCCS, which is part of the CSU system, and CSU Pueblo, who I've discussed this with, to provide the city the same kind of information that's being obtained by other large cities in Colorado. And we'll go into the detail later. The other thing I'd like to see is for the city to have an internal auditor. That person would actually answer to the city council. There would be, this internal auditor would, would be a new position, but would help us in looking at how to be more efficient and make sure that everybody's following policies and procedures, et cetera. Almost every large organization has an internal auditor. We do not. They have to have autonomy. They have to have their own ability to, to look at every angle of our, of our government. And then lastly, I'd like to see us use some of our Habsin sales tax for the development of property, which we do now. We actually clear ground and build buildings in anticipation of having an opportunity out there of some, some company needing a building. We should use the same concept in, in raising buildings and preparing ground throughout our city that could potentially be a raw piece of land we can use as an incentive or putting a building. So those are just general thoughts.
Those are great.
All right. Yeah, I, I hope you'll excuse my frustration. But we're, again, we're confusing objectives and goals again. And it's been my, this has happened ever since I've been in government. People don't know the difference between objectives and goals. I mean, with all due respect, the goal should be to improve the I-25 corridor through Pueblo. An objective would be, how are we going to accomplish that? And one of the objectives would be to build the wall. That's an objective. That's not a goal.
Well, I think through this process, that's what we're trying to do.
Well, no, we're not, because what we're doing is we're, we're confusing the two again. Again, goals are general, intangible, broad. If we do a goal, I'm just, I'm picking on you, Ray, but if we just do a goal of putting a wall from Northern to Pueblo Boulevard, that's, that doesn't accomplish the broad idea of improving the whole I-25 corridor. So the goal should be improving the I-25 corridor. The, the objectives should be, number one, put, place a wall through that. And then under that objective, how are we going to accomplish that objective? And that objective being, how are we going to accomplish the goal? So may I suggest that the, the goal be to make it broader, because it's too, it's too narrow.
Very good point. And then, that's my fault, though. That's my fault, because I started this off by, let's throw out what we want to see happen. Then we can refine.
Let's identify the five goals. It would improving the I-25 corridor be the goal. You know what I'm saying? And then our, our objectives would be under that. What, what projects do we want under that goal? And then how, the objective is, objectives are how we are going to accomplish the goal. They're not little goals within the goal. Does that make sense? Same thing with the, a great idea, but shouldn't the goal be to I don't know how to phrase it, but increase the the business model, economic model of Pueblo. The, the goal is to increase the economic model. The, the objective is to get CSU Pueblo to help us out with that. You see what I mean? Oh, yeah. I mean, I, I love, I, I love it, but it's, it, it getting CSU Pueblo to help us with it is very narrow. What is the, the goal? Same thing with a building of houses in Pueblo. The goal should be to increase the, the availability of low-cost housing in our poorer neighborhoods or whatever, the goal. And then how do we accomplish that? Well, one of the ways would be to change the criteria of PETCO. And I'm not for that, by the way, but I, I, that's, that the PETCO is another issue altogether. I do have another idea on how we could do that, but let me suggest that goal number three would be to improve the I-25 corridor through Pueblo. That, that, that would be a goal. Would that be okay with you guys? That would be number three. And then number four, again, recreation. What kind of recreation facilities do we need for the city of Pueblo? A recreation center is a narrow, a, a, a project within the broader goal of improving recreation for Pueblo. We also, I've always, I've been harping on a softball complex. We also need improvement that, I mean, would, would, do we want to improve more of the ice arena? What do we want to do about the soccer fields? What do we want to do about the tennis courts? What do we want to do about basketball courts? All those within the broader goal of recreation. Does that make sense? So I, I would say that number four would be improve recreation abilities or capabilities of the city. Agree? Am I agree with that? And then under that, we could list our, the community center, the aquatic center, and then every other little shit that we wanted to, to put under.
Well, here's the problem. Rather than saying that you have five specific, those are very good, what you're talking about, what you're saying makes sense. But you're never going to be able to develop a goal unless you know what it is that the council person wants to accomplish. So in my opinion, before you get to the goal, you have to have what it is you're trying to accomplish. So when Ray says that he wants to, to, one, one of his passions is a community center, which is narrow. It's an objective. I want a community center for the community. You make a great point that that should be under recreation, because there's lots of other things under recreation. You like softball. One of your goals is that you want a softball field. That should be, and when, when we develop under recreation. But if we don't allow the process to go through of what each, every council person wants as a part of their passion, then we're never going to get the goals. So you're, we're just going to put up, okay, let's have a goal under housing. Maybe I'm the only one that cares about housing, you know?
No, but this is a collective exercise. If, if you bring up housing, then the rest of us have got to come up with the, and we agree that it's a goal to accomplish, then all of us have to come up with the objectives as to how to accomplish that goal. Makes sense? Thank you. Because you're getting lost in, this is brainstorming session, okay? This isn't dealing with the weeds. This is only throwing out what you think, and they're going to write it down. Then we come back and deal with the weeds to have a discussion, what's the objective, what's the goal? It, it's kind of a waste of time to me. It just, this is a brainstorming. We can pick it apart after it's done. My goals are real state, raise sales tax by at least five percent annually. Five percent annually raising sales tax? Yes, no? In income, raise more people coming here. The most important thing this council can do as a goal in in the four or six years I've been here so far, the most important thing a council can be is functional and not be dragging out a lot of personal underwear and that sort of thing and dragging on each other. And I have not seen that. And to me, that is the number one goal of every council, is to be productive. Okay, I'd like to see, we've got to increase streets, more money for streets. The mayor has an idea to put it on sales tax right now. We're getting two or three million, I think, from the tax. But in order to, the exoteric effect, if we turn it to a sales tax, everybody comes from Mar, Denver, Colorado Springs, Japan, wherever it is, they'll hit, they help pay for the roads. So I want, I want more money for streets. I'm going to go off of Mark and just call it population growth. We need more people to live in this city. Next goal is better use of the educational facilities, and this ties into what Dennis was talking about. The better use of the of the educational facilities within the state. We have a river running through here, guys, and no, almost nobody has a river running through their city. We have tremendous recreational opportunities if we figure out better uses for the river and more uses for it. We also have, any of you ride mountain bikes or particular motorcycles? If you go out to the, on Pueblo Boulevard there, ladies and gentlemen, we have acres and acres of usable for recreation, for bike race, for motorcycle races, that kind of things. We've got all that dirt sitting out there, and it could be useful, and it could be used to bring people in for races and that sort of thing. That gets to specifics, but better use of our existing land. I'll stop there. And then I'm going to double jump in with Larry's. And we do need, and Ray, we do need more recreational, we need more reasons for people to come to Pueblo. And recreational facilities are a great way to do it, and I would be all for recreational and and cultural tax of some kind, sales tax, but I don't care what it is. I'm not going to stay in specifics, but we need, we need to put more money into those things and get, we can get the art center off of, off thing. We can remove some of our council responsibility or financial responsibilities if we can pass it on and get that done. And then I'm just glad to be here.
Well, the number one thing I've heard from some of my constituents is is the streets and the mayor's addressing some of that, but that was a top priority.
Laurie.
You know, I have, I have a lot, but I'll, I'll keep it limited. I'm looking for a clean city, a safe city, and a city with good schools. The real estate market is absolutely booming. Even a home in extremely poor condition is selling these days for hundred and seventy five to two hundred thousand dollars. And that's poor condition and in a blighted neighborhood. You know, I I agree with Larry, just putting up a wall on I twenty five doesn't really solve the problem either. Our job is to uphold the laws and the ordinances of this city. And if that was done, the visual from I twenty five would look a lot different than than it does now. I think we spend way too much money on surveys and meetings and consultants. I I I think we talk about the same problems over and over and over, year after year after year. We've been talking about these things probably since the nineteen sixties. I think image is a big problem. Again, that has to do with a clean city, a safe city, and a city with good schools. I think that the city of Pueblo has too long ignored the issues of District sixty, and they they exist in silos and say, there's nothing we can do about it. And gosh darn it, I'm I'm sick of District sixty having a bad reputation. And certainly, some of our leaders in this city just saying that plenty of kids go to Harvard is not a good answer, because if plenty of kids are going to Harvard, we wouldn't have the reputation that we do with District sixty. We would have mamas lined up to move here if that was the case. I would also like these committees such as Petco and Urban Renewal. I'd like the city to have a little more handle on that as far as their budget. I'd like to see that. I know that Urban Renewal donated five hundred grand to PCC, which is not really an urban renewal project. An urban renewal project would be eliminating blight, and five hundred thousand dollars certainly could have taken care of some of some some of that. I think I twenty five needs help. I think all of our gateway streets need help. That would be I twenty five, Hudson, Ford. I mean, I I could go on and on, but as soon as you start taking care of those gateway streets, your residential streets extending from that will will improve. I would also like to talk about a possible eighth cents, an eighth of a cent sales tax for cleaning up alleys and picking up large items once a month. This would be contracted. This would not be handled by the city, but it'd be a contract with a current trash company. It's already established. They have the equipment. They have the personnel. And large item pickup would also include yard debris. So say, the first week of every month, Bessemer has this pickup. And the second week of every month, the north side has a pickup, et cetera. So I'd like to see that on 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 the next election, if possible. And I mean, I could go on and on, but I'll, I'll stop there.
Well, we have plenty of time, so if you want to give us more, you can give us more.
And and I would also like to have a serious look at our at our marketing. I know that everybody has heard this before, but I think we're directing to the wrong market when it comes to marketing. I think eight hundred thousand dollars a year for marketing to the chamber is absolutely ridiculous. And I'd like to see a professional marketing company that is marketing to, marketing to the local, the local market. We're not a destination city. We're more of a a city that people throughout Colorado would come to, maybe extending into New Mexico and some of the other bordering states, but that's about it. We don't need to be going outside of that region. And I think we already have a lot of recreational opportunities. I mean, we have some of the best fishing opportunities in the world here, and people that fish know it. I I think we're kind of covered there. We just, we just need, and then people come from all over the state to for bird watching. I think that we just need to focus on being a clean, safe city with good schools. Otherwise, you're not going to get young families here. I mean, we've already got kind of the older population moving here as they want to get out of larger cities and move in this direction. That's the reason for our booming real estate market. I mean, that's happening with with or without us. And we still need, we still need to focus on bringing younger folks here. That's all for now.
Very good. So what do you think, Laura? I, we've got some, some great topics here.
Would you like to have a separate priority list from Mayor Gradisar?
Oh, that's right. Mayor?
I think that you talked about the priorities that that I've got. Obviously, I guess one that's not listed there is revitalize downtown, you know, and reinvigorate that, the Riverwalk area, the downtown area, the Union Avenue area by having more people live and work in that area. You know, that's, I think, should be a goal. I guess the the number one goal for me, for the remainder of the year, is going to be the sales tax for street repairs and transportation infrastructure that will sort of feed into some of the other goals, like the I twenty five corridor. You, we, you all heard the presentation from Commissioner Tebow about the necessity of local communities finding some of those matching funds when federal or state grants are available for those kind of things. You all know that we have the oldest section of I twenty five in the state of Colorado running through Pueblo. So I I think that's, that should be something we should focus on. I think that the goal for housing is a great goal. We need more housing in the city of Pueblo, all kinds of housing, affordable housing, the market rate housing, the workplace housing. That will, if we have more housing, I think that'll help get more young people here, if there are places for them, for them to live that are not cost prohibitive. So and I think a goal should be, in terms of attracting young people here, is to sort of target for our economic development efforts, those individuals who have jobs where they can work anywhere in the world. They they can work from home anywhere in the world and make Pueblo an attractive place for them in terms of some accommodations for them. And they're looking, I think, for the most part, for a vibrant city center where they can live, work, and play all in one place. That, to the extent that we can create that kind of an atmosphere, we can get those people to bring their jobs with them and move to Pueblo. And those are not a large number of jobs all the time, but they're one job at a time. But for the most part, these are going to be educated, intelligent people that will be the kind of citizens that we want to have here in the long run, that will have their job with them and they're perhaps the entrepreneurial kind of people that, you know, they're working from home, doing this kind of stuff, but they've got this other project in mind, and I think we want to get those kind of people here. So I think that should be something we spend some time on as well.
Right.
That type of clientele, or that kind of entrepreneurial person?
Well, we've got, you know, obviously, a tremendous reservoir here. We've got tremendous bike trails. We've got tremendous parks here. What we don't have, I think, are some of those market rate housing things that are modern, smaller size apartments that have, you know, high speed internet and, you know, are sort of carefree. They don't have to mess with yards and that kind of stuff. You know, they can walk to the entertainment areas and walk to dinner, those kind of things. That's what I think we're lacking in terms of that. I think there's some plans, obviously, and discussions taking place that would bring some of that stuff downtown. But I think we need to make sure we're pushing that along and helping them in everywhere we can.
Those are great points. So tell me if I'm wrong here. Hopefully, you'll tell me I'm right. I've identified at least four areas that we ought to write down. Infrastructure. And each one of these, each one of these have these subgroups that go below it. So you can look at infrastructure as number one. Image is number two. Development as number three. And recreation as number four. I put, I I penciled in number five as legislation. And the reason I said legislation is when you're talking about raising sales taxes and doing things, there are specific things that could go under that legislation part of it that make their, that make more sense, in my opinion. So for instance, under infrastructure, obviously, the streets seems to be a theme for everybody doing something different on the streets, right? When you look at image, we were, we heard about cities and schools, clean, safe city. When you looked at development, we heard about revitalize downtown. Build more homes. Recreation, we heard about the community center. Under image, we, we also have the I twenty five wall landscaping to. And then under legislation, I would put, you guys can change this around any way you want. Under legislation, I had raised raised sales tax by five percent. Half cent or raise sales tax for streets. Uphold the laws. Budget deficit.
I just wanted to add the the potential of adding tourism on there, because I think I've heard, I I, you know, the aquatic center is definitely has a focus on tourism. Bob has indicated we should be looking at increasing our sales tax. That's how it's going to be accomplished.
But again, that's, is someone talking? I can't tell. I can't hear.
Hold on one second, Laurie. What do you have, Laurie? What were you going to say?
Oh, I was just going to say the, again, the aquatic center is bringing more people downtown, and it's not necessarily a destination. So when you're talking about tourism, that's pretty much local people making their way here. Making their way downtown, whether it's people from Pueblo or from Walsenburg. I mean, I know there's a lot of folks in Pueblo that drive their kids down to Walsenburg to to go to the the water park there. So anyway.
Yeah, we're just throwing them under.
I know, I know.
Again, we don't need to be.
I know, I know.
Getting into specifics yet. Anybody have any other ideas on those?
Mark, I also, you missed that one eighth of a cent sales tax for cleanup, alley cleanup and once, once a month, large item yard debris.
I don't know if legislation is a good word for that deal, but I I just threw it under there.
It would be a vote. We'd have to put it on the ballot.
Mr. Chairman, the other item under legislation was Dennis's suggestion of more transparency with respect to the internal auditor.
And the half cent sales tax for blighted areas, things like that.
You know, guys, besides the river that runs through here that everybody would want, I agree with Dennis. We don't make near enough use of the education that exists here in town through the colleges, through the business school and that sort of thing. So we got brains out there, and they're sitting on a hill, and we ought to use them.
Great point. I mean, great point. We need to be involved with that.
You know, the the idea for data for us to be able to make decisions. I'll I'll expand on that later. But, you know, the the information is so important. You take a town like Fort Collins, and I know this because I I used to work up there through the board, the CSU board, is that a lot of the businesses down there, they use this data to look internally as to, do they need to hire more people? Do they want to expand at that point in time? Do they want to add an additional satellite office? All those kinds of things is so valuable to our business community. And we don't have that kind of data for business people. You know, how many houses are we going to anticipate? How do we get subcontractors? I mean, all of that kind of stuff is, all these cities have that information. We don't.
Absolutely. Those are great points. And I, again, I think that in a lot of areas, there's a, there's a few presentations that are going to go on throughout the day that are going to bring a lot of, several of these things into perspective, especially in the community development and the recreation center side of it. So that that's good. So I think throughout the rest of the day, what we need to do with our little stickers here is to, when when we take our breaks, is do one, two, three, four, or five on things that you think are a priority. If you come up with anything else, get it written down and get it onto the list. And and then as we circle back, we're going to come back to this. Laura, what did you have?
I was just going to ask, sir, if you could ask Laurie to send that to me electronically from my computer, and we'll we'll record hers for her.
Absolutely. Larry?
At the end of the day, we are, we're going to. At the end of the day, we are, we're going to uh have a consensus on the five goals that you mentioned before, or maybe six or whatever we decided.
Whatever we decide.
Because I think it's important that we identify the goals. And then by, I, let me call it subcommittee, delve into the objectives as to how we're going to accomplish those goals. What the goals are. Uh, I twenty-five corridor is under infrastructure. If we walk, if it's infrastructure is the goal, then I twenty-five is a uh objective as to how uh, infrastructure means a lot of things, by the way. It's just not just transportation, not just streets. Uh, that's only one thing. Uh, we don't have to go into all the other infrastructure things that we need to do. We could just do infrastructure, streets and highways and then go with that. You know what I mean? Otherwise, infrastructure means water, everything. Uh, so I just, I, I just want to be able to uh by consensus, figure out what those five goals are and then uh get into the weeds as to how we're going to accomplish those goals, one year, five years.
Exactly. And I think that's a great point. And I think what we hope to accomplish out of this morning is that we've got some things that we're all very interested in accomplishing over the next year for sure. And we want to look at five years down the road or, or whatever. Obviously, the process of getting to those specific goals and objectives will take several work sessions and public meetings to make, to put, to put into uh play, if you get what I'm saying. So we're gonna have to have another work session and make sure that we're all on board. We're all gonna have to, then we're gonna, we're gonna create an ordinance or a resolution that brings it back. And memorialize, memorializes as a council.
It, it should be said also too, that goals are the prerogative of the council, the, the head. Objectives are what a lot of uh, those go to staff. Obligations. You know, they're the ones that know uh the weeds, so to speak. Uh, if we're talking about uh recreation, then let's have a meeting with the recreation people and say, uh, how do we accomplish? We want to increase recreation possibilities in the city of Pueblo. Let's sit down with the experts and, and uh build the, the, the ways to how to, to do that. Does that make sense? Because uh, we, we don't, we can, we're the high level, we're the ten thousand foot level. What we need is people who can tell us, because we know nothing about these things. We know something, but not, not as much as we should. Make sense?
Makes sense. Laura?
Mr. Chairman, might I suggest that by the end of the day, maybe there's a subcommittee that could take your initial uh words of goals and turn it into the, the full written goal uh with the objectives underneath and circulate that to all of council. And I could work with the mayor and I, it sounds like two city council before we have to notice a meeting.
We can do that. We'll decide that at the end of the day and uh make that happen. So I just suggest again, take your little numbers, put them on what's priority for you. At the end of the day, we'll look at it again for a short period of time, see what, what's out there. And then I think the chief of staff has a fantastic idea of two council members and the chief of staff and the mayor getting together and putting together specifics to get back to city council. Any questions before we move on?
I just wanted to make comment. You know, we can set five goals. Realistically, guys, I think if we can accomplish three seems to be a magic number. My point is, don't, don't try to accomplish so many things it becomes impossible. I mean, maybe these committees could pick out down to three or something, but to me, five's a big number to try and accomplish in, in, in a year. But I, that's just a thought. I, I feel more comfortable if we could.
Five is not a point. They're five year goals. I mean, you could have one goal.
Okay.
We want to do one thing in five years. Uh, I think the community would probably want us to have more than one, but you're exactly right, Bob. If it ends up being two or three that we think we can accomplish. Actually, we, we, we need to, to almost be positive we can accomplish.
I can't be positive if we accomplish five goals.
We'll work hard to make this happen and bring, bring it back. I think this is good, good information and a way to get, get started. Any other questions, Matt?
You know, my thought is that these should be a stretch. I mean, these shouldn't be easy. These, these should be things that, you know, let's set them as goals and, you know, if we don't accomplish them, that's not a failure as long as we keep moving towards. I mean, I think that's sort of the attitude we ought to have.
True.
Uh, that we, that we, it should be a stretch and not just settle for little things that uh, you know, we can get done so we can say we did it. You know, we should, you know, we should be bold, I think, in terms of this and uh, and go big. That's how we're going to move the community forward.
I think we're all on board with that. All on board with that. So, uh, yes, Laura?
Uh, the reminder was the goals are five year goals, but the objectives are, are achievable within one year. That may be, you know, a smaller number.
Or two years.
Or two.
These objectives in one year, these objectives in two years, these objectives in three. Dennis?
Yeah, one, one of the things that I did on the four items that I wanted to break up today, uh, and maybe I was, I was thinking very frugally or whatever, but there's so much long hanging fruit, like they say, uh, in, in doing some of these projects that do not have a cost to us. And if you look at a lot of the items that we're looking up there, you know, we're, we're gonna need a reallocation of funds. We're talking about uh, you know, putting a tax issue on the ballot, all of that kind of stuff. But when you think about uh some of these ideas, uh, there's no cost. It's just a matter of doing it. Hiring an internal auditor, that person will pay for themselves. And the savings, the increased productivity, uh, getting uh our departments to work better. The, doing the study for the uh, the, the rec center. Uh, we have a resource in the urban renewal. They have the expertise to be able to do that at no cost to us. Uh, including, and then the data, there's uh, getting this data, ultimately, I want to shift the cost to businesses in the community. And once they see this, they will pay it. So it's not an ongoing expense with the city. We will need the upfront money to push it forward like a snowball, you know, just the first push. And then the other, uh, the other uh the half cent sales tax idea about creating opportunities, they're already doing that. That's not gonna, that, that's not additional funds. They're doing that now through their, through the absence sales tax fund. So there's a lot of things that we talked about today that really are not going to be hard to accomplish.
We just need to do them. We just need to do them. But this is nice because, you know, we, now we can see it. And you've brought it to our attention. Now we can run with the ball and say, hey, let's get this done. Uh, that's it, five minutes and we'll uh get back together for the next part. So we can stay uh thirty minutes behind. Yeah, don't, don't forget to put your little stickers up there before uh, before the end of the day. The mayor got stickers, didn't he, Laura? All right. All right, let's uh, I'll try to get back to our seats and get this rolling. Here shortly, we're gonna move into our next presentation. All right, everybody's here. Our next presentation is access to department directors. You know, as a city council member, I can say without a doubt that maybe the most concerning thing to me as a counselor is the, the flow of information and the ability to get information to do our job. Uh, and, and sometimes that, in my opinion, becomes somewhat restricted. And, and uh we're just gonna go through a presentation through Mr. Kogosik on the city, city charter authority and access department directors. And uh, Mr. Kogosik, we'll leave it up to you to start this off.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, let me begin with a public service announcement.
Okay.
Uh, I, I, I hope all of you have been in touch with the city clerk. But uh, just for the record, uh, every member of council, those whose terms are expiring at the end of the year, every member's eligible to run again with one exception. And that's Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown is, is term limited, so I, I just wanted uh you, you to have that information. The discussion about uh access to uh department directors and city employees began during Sam Light's presentation. And uh, he was correct that every strong mayor system of government, and that includes Denver and Pueblo, we have a strong mayor paradigm here. Every one of their charters uh has something similar to what's in the Pueblo city charter at section uh three dash five H. The council and its members shall deal with the administrative service solely through the mayor. I guess the key word there is deal. I didn't highlight deal, uh, but what does that mean? I, I read it broadly. I, I read it broadly, frankly. And so I think the policy has been set by the people. The policy is, uh, subsection H, uh, where it says you, uh, must go solely through the mayor. The issue becomes what? What? The, when we went to a strong mayor system. Yeah, it's right there, Ray. That. Okay, well, let's finish the presentation and we can talk about this.
Yeah.
So I think the policy has been set. The issue, uh, be- between the mayor and the city council is procedures. Um, and, you know, that, that's gonna be up to, uh, to the mayor and council. What procedure should we follow? Obviously, the mayor is not, uh, gonna deprive you of any information. Or access to department directors up to a point. Uh, I, I think, uh, there's a danger of council members micromanaging the administrative function of the city. And that, I think, is really, I'll let the mayor speak for himself. That really is, uh, I think his goal. But the, you know, we've worked with the mayor now, uh, for, for two years and I, he is, uh, never denied information to, uh, council. And my interactions, uh, with, uh, council members have, 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 I think, uh, you know, been great. You, you, uh, uh, you know, I, I'm assigned a task, uh, by the mayor or by the chief of staff and, well, I'm happy to do it. I'm always ready to take, uh, phone calls. And I'm in a little different position because, you know, I'm the chief legal officer for the city. I, I'm not like a typical director. Uh, but, uh, I'm, I'm always, uh, available for calls. I am not gonna begin a project. I'm not gonna draft an ordinance, uh, uh, until I'm, I'm told to do so by, by the mayor or the chief of staff. So I, I think we're all on the same page. The procedures have been pretty much informal. Uh, a council member sends, uh, an email to the mayor or chief of staff and says, I would like, uh, Dan to do the following. And then I get an email, uh, from the mayor or chief of staff and says, Dan, please do it. And I'm, I'm happy to do it. So I think what, what the administration wants to avoid is this micromanaging. Or in some cases, is playing gotcha. You know, there, there are, uh, some, some people who, who want to, uh, you know, embarrass the mayor or the, uh, administration. Uh, and so they, they play this gotcha game. Well, you said this, and now this. That, that's just not productive. So from my perspective, I'm always ready to take a call. I'm not gonna do anything, uh, unless I'm told to do it, uh, by the mayor or the chief of staff. So, uh, it's, I know we're falling behind, so I've got a short presentation and I'm here for any questions.
Well, we thank you for that, uh, Mr. Kogosik. And it's always refreshing when an attorney has a short presentation. That's rare. It is rare. Yes.
Mayor, I just wanna add that, uh, you know, this language that's in the charter, that was not language that was added to the charter when we changed to a strong mayor form of government. That language was in there when we had a city manager as well. So it's, it's been there, uh, so that council didn't interfere with the city manager when we had a city manager and the city manager's, uh, direction of, of the workforce. Um, and you know, I, we've had this conversation a couple of times, I think, in the last couple of years, or less, in the last year at city council meetings about this specific, uh, section of the charter and the necessity of going through the mayor's office. And for the most part, everybody's doing that. There are some exceptions still though, where emails are going out to department heads asking for information or making requests of department heads. And you can imagine the department heads, as Sam indicated, it's, it's a request. It's not an order. It's not a direction. But the department head, when they get that email from, uh, a city council person, wonders, you know, do I really have a choice to ignore this or not? Um, and I've told him that, you know, you need to not respond to those until that comes through the mayor's office. That's the way I wanna set up. And I'm not gonna say that we're not gonna do that, but as I said previously, you know, um, it's the mayor that directs the directors and supervises directors and sets their priorities. Time is obviously a commodity that, uh, is rare for everybody. And to the extent that we're having them track down stuff or do stuff at the direction of the city council and not because of the, not doing what the mayor wants done, that, that becomes a problem. Um, and as I said before, I think, you know, you can go down as many rabbit holes as you want to as members of city council, but you can't take the directors with them with you down those rabbit holes unless you get elected mayor. Now, if you get elected mayor, then, then you're able to do that. But, uh, while you're on the city council, it's the mayor that directs those, those people.
So the argument, the argument, I just wanna clarify something for my own good. So the ar- you know, I think that everything got lost in translation and communication a year ago, a year and a half ago. Uh, that the mayor's office was very upset about, uh, council members calling and directing, uh, staff to do something to, uh, uh, whatever it was. Who, who knows what it was, but it, but it happened. And because of that, the direction came from the mayor's office, as I recall, that city councils not to have any conversations with directors without going through the mayor's office. So it's almost, it, it, the order itself became so mundane to the fact of, uh, do I email the chief of staff's office to, to ask Stephen Meyer, the director of Parks and Recreation, if he's coming to a meeting this afternoon? You know, because that's how the order came down, that I can't pick up the phone and ask Stephen Meyer myself whether he's coming to a meeting this afternoon. And is that a good use of, uh, personnel? Is that a good use of, hey, uh, chief of staff, I need you to, uh, ask Stephen Meyer if he's coming to a meeting this afternoon? Because the way the order came down was, is that we're not to have any conversation with them unless we go through the mayor's office. Now, you can take the charter, and I understand from a lawyer's perspective, a- and, and we have two lawyers that are in charge of this saying that, uh, members shall deal with the administrative service solely through the mayor and neither the council or any member thereof shall give orders to any subordinates of the mayor, either publicly or privately. So the gray area comes is asking for information, giving an order. Well, you know-
I think it depends. And when you say you have a conversation, you wanna have a call and s- ask the director if they're coming to the meeting. Uh, are you directing them to come to the meeting?
No, I'm asking, are you coming to the meeting this afternoon?
Okay. And if they say no?
Okay. Just wanna know.
Okay. That, well, that, that's sort of, I think, sort of sets it up. Why do you wanna know whether they're coming or not?
Right.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to keep it kind of simple. Um, seems to me that it would be okay if we called and asked the apartment, like, called the chief and asked him some question about traffic. I'm asking him a question. There's a difference between a question and an order or a demand. To me, we ought to be able to call him and ask the chief, uh, what about the traffic on 29th Street? That sort of thing. What's going on? I think we have to be very careful about making sure that they don't feel that, that we tell them right up front, I can't give you any orders. But it, I mean, we should be able to ask questions just for simplicity.
And I don't have a problem with that. What I have a problem with is when you, when there's a question or there's an email sent saying, hey, uh, chief, send somebody out to such and such an address because such and such has taken place.
Okay. So us just calling and asking questions is okay?
Yeah.
Just don't give any orders, right? That's pretty simple law to me to follow. Okay. I'm good with that. Thank you.
Dennis?
Uh, I had an example yesterday of how I think, I think, uh, the way we should be handling this works, I think, better than if we, if we tried contacting the directors directly. Uh, I had a, I had a citizen complaint yesterday about a homeless issue and about, uh, uh, trash that was stolen all over his business. My first reaction is to, because you delegated that response, part of that responsibility to the chief of staff. So I picked up the phone. I called Laura. She contacted, uh, Karen Wilson, uh, chief, uh, Davenport. Chief Davenport assigned assistant chief, uh, Kohler. And this was like one o'clock yesterday. And by three o'clock, the problem was solved. I mean, that's how quickly it was handled. And so, uh, I, I believe that, uh, well, I, I, you know, uh, that's not our responsibility to get involved with me calling the chief or the assistant chief or Karen Wilson. It is really your responsibility through your delegation and office. And, and yesterday was a classic example. The guy even called me back. He was overwhelmed that it was handled so quickly. So those are the guy, I, I think it's much more efficient. And it's also, it's also legally correct to do it in that way. Once in a while, I'll send, uh, Laura an email and I might copy the director because I, I don't want her, it's easier for the director to understand what it is. But again, the primary responder is to Laura.
As for the most part-
And I might copy, I might copy Stephen Meyer because I have two paragraphs saying that he explains the problem to help Laura really not to get involved.
Uh, Lori?
Um, my issue is obtaining information that probably somebody doesn't wanna give to me. So I'm still waiting for information and I guess I'll just have to submit a cora. That's all I've got.
Larry? I, I don't have a problem with, uh, your directive, mayor. Uh, I, I, I knew the regulation for the, 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 uh, what was in the charter before, when we had this, uh, manager, I would ask permission to speak to department heads. Uh, the only question I have, i- if it's an ongoing project, I, I believe my initial request would be enough for me to continue communicating with that person later on in the project. I wouldn't have to say, oh, can I call him again this week because I talked to him last week? I, I don't think I should be able to do that. Uh, your initial, uh, uh, my initial request should be enough. And then if you give me permission, then if the project lasts six months, within that six months, I should be able to, uh, communicate with.
Yeah.
With, with staff.
Yeah, whoever it might be.
And if that communication starts to become a problem because it's overbearing or the department, uh, director feels uncomfortable or something, I'm gonna hear about it and we'll have a conversation and we'll change it and say, hey.
That's fine.
Now, I don't expect that's gonna happen.
Yeah.
You know, you guys are on boards and commissions and directors appear there and you have business with those boards and commissions. And obviously, that's, that's a different kind of interaction that takes place and, um, you know, that, that's not a problem. I don't think this is a big problem, but I don't think so either. It's, it's, it's-
What, what I, what I think, what I think, sorry.
The administrator, if your purview is directing staff, our directive is to provide leadership and, and, and vision and, 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 uh, all that other stuff. Our, ours isn't to direct staff. Uh, I, I've been really careful. As a matter of fact, when I talk to staff, I say, what, this is the thing that we wanna do. This, this is the high level. This is what I would like to see. How do we do it? You tell me how to do it. And more than likely, they come up with a lot better ideas than I ever had in the first place. You know, as to, as to how to get things done.
Yeah.
So, uh, no, I don't, I don't like to direct them because I know they know better than I do as to what, uh, their expertise is. And like I said, they come up with a lot better ideas than I ever could. No, I don't have a problem with what you're doing there. Lori?
Yeah, m- my, my problem is when a council member cannot get public information. I mean, I think that we should be able to get that public information without asking for a cora. Um, you know, I came to an absolute dead end on, on a particular issue and, and I don't think council should have to cora. I, I mean, that's, that's my deal.
Well, let's talk about that information. What, what information was it? You came to a dead end on that you couldn't get that was public information?
Do you want me to specify?
Sure.
Okay. Um, I wanted, uh, invoices on a project with THAR process that the city paid out $2 million on to contractors that had no final inspection on. And we had, we, we paid them out in full and I toured the building and obviously, um, not all the work was complete. And, um, of course, it's not complete until you have a final. So, I mean, you can e- not rely on me, but you can lie up, rely on a final, final inspection. And, um, I mean, I think that there should be at least invoices or some kind of final inspection, um, so we know what we're paying out for. Um, that's what I request, requested. And then I was hit with, with, don't talk to her anymore. And then, um, that's the situ- that's one particular situation, yes.
Well, and that, that situation was that, uh, you know, the work was not completed because THAR processing quit paying the contractors. They quit paying the contractors, so they wouldn't complete the work, obviously.
But then don't, don't pay out $2 million of work that, that's not completed.
Well, the work was done.
No, it wasn't. It, there was not, there was not one final inspection on any of that work. And you, you didn't give me one invoice that said how much everything was, what, what, you know, what was included in, in somebody's work. Now, I'm not gonna sit here and argue about THAR, but, you know, before you pay out $2 million, there better be final inspections and invoices with specific itemized costs.
No, that's not true. That's not true. That's not how that happened. We settled that case with those contractors that filed those liens and we paid them for the work that they did.
Well, that's, you know-
For the work that they did. Okay, so the only-
No, I don't, I don't think you're gonna find anybody that agrees with you.
Does a council person have the right to have access to that invoice?
No, I think so. Yeah. Okay. So is what you're asking, uh, council winner, did he, you want a copy of the invoice, correct?
I wanted a copy of the invoice with itemized, um, itemized work that comes to that total on the invoice. And, and you should not be paying out full to anybody until the work's completed. So even if you planned on paying these people, uh, you should wait until, I mean, there was a way to close on it with, with paying these people when the work's complete.
The point of the comment and staying within the, 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 uh, what, what the topic here is your complaint was you did not get a copy of the invoice, correct?
But, but the answer was, we don't do it that way. That's the, that's the answer.
What he said. He said you could have an invoice.
And Dan's worked on it. He could perhaps correct me. I'm not sure whether we ever had those invoices ourselves. I mean-
So why would you pay out $2 million if you had no invoices?
Well, let me-
Or final inspections from regional building?
The under-
You know, I think what we have is a case of post-traumatic stress disorder that's over the top.
A, a, a big help in, in settling the THAR case came from Petto. Um, and, uh, uh, Mr. Shaw, and he reviewed every invoice from all the liens. He verified that the, uh, that the invoices and liens paid out. Now, there was one contract- Now, there was one contractor that, uh, claimed more than was supported by invoices. Uh, and, uh, that was, uh, you know, the general contractor and, and his, his payout was reduced. But each of those, we, we verified the liens. I mean, these liens were filed, uh, you know, in X, for about $2 million. We verified each invoice, uh, that, uh, that, that we paid the general contractor on. But does the city have those? No. So who would she go to to get those? That's the only question that we need to know. I, you know, I, I guess we, we can ask, ask for them, uh, uh, from, from all the people, uh, that we paid. Uh, we, you know, we can ask Jeff Shaw to, to come back and, uh, verify that, that the invoices totaled the amount of lien. But there was, uh, you know, time, time pressure to, uh, to settle this case.
But you don't have a final on any of this, that this work is completed. The, the, the regional building has not one final on this, at least at the time of closing. And you know, we can, a- again, I, I would like those voices, those, those itemized invoices. That's, that's what I want.
The contractors, uh, walked off, uh, the job because they, they weren't getting, getting paid. So no, there was no final inspection.
Well, there should, there should be some invoices, uh, with, that, of what we paid for, specifically what we paid for.
Okay, this settlement was approved unanimously by council. And then after the fact-
That doesn't, that doesn't matter. I should be able to do it. I'll, I'll submit a cora to Petco or something. I mean, I don't know.
Here's what I think that we need to do with this. We need to, to, can I, can I get you guys to say that you'll look into, to where the invoices might be? So, so she can get a copy of the invoices? Would somebody look into that? To see if there's an invoice, if Petco has invoices? You know?
I, I don't think Petco has invoices. I, I think they were reviewed by, by, by Jeff Shaw and other members of, you know, his staff. PDM was involved in that also. Yeah, right. I mean, we, yeah, so, uh, I'm, I'm not sure what, to what end we do that since the settlement was unanimously approved. We paid the money. And the liens have, uh, been released and the city has clear title to the property.
I understand.
For, for what purpose are we doing this?
So that's an example, I think, of, you know, going down rabbit holes. I mean, if-
That's not a rabbit hole. That's not a rabbit hole at all. Also, also you have that, also you have that building back for sale.
Lori, let him finish, let him finish.
Oh, sorry.
And answer. You know, if, if this was a legitimate concern, this, this could have brought up, brought up before the, the deal was consummated, before council approved. But once it's done, you know, does it make sense for us to spend time and money going back and revisiting that? To me, it doesn't. Like I say, if an individual council member wants to do that- For the purpose of this meeting, THAR is not an issue. So we need to, we need to drop this. The, the, the whole purpose was on a council member said they could not get information. Who, there was, there's reasons for that, but I, I think the council member deserves to know that there's no, no way that they're going to get them. And whatever she has to do to get them, she can, uh, she can do that. I think she has a right to ask for that information. And, uh, that the city would have an obligation to look for. If you don't have it, you can't, you can't give it. So there's, we're going to have to look for another way for Council winner to come up with those. I don't want to go down this, the, the, this path at this meeting. That's just not what we're going to do because this is about access to staff. I think she brought-
Well, this is about access to, access to information as well. I mean, a council member should not have to submit a cora.
Not discounting what you've said. I think you have a valid point and I think that's something that, that, that brings up this whole conversation. But as I understand it, summarizing from what we've talked about, uh, so far, is that you do not have a problem with a council member calling staff and asking a question. As long as they're not directing them to do work. Are you, you're fine with it? Well, it'll be a problem if they're asking a question that requires eight or 10 hours of research to find the answer to that question. We're not talking about that. Well, if we're not talking about that, I don't have a problem with it. If we are talking about that, and that's why it's important. So let me ask the counselors. Does everybody understand that you cannot call staff and ask them to do 10 hours worth of, of work for you? Is there anybody that does not understand that? So in reality, all we're asking for is there was a, a statement made a year ago that we were not to have any conversation with staff without going through the mayor. Are we okay to call and ask staff a question that does not require 15 minutes of research? Sure. Let alone eight hours? I don't have a problem with that. And I know people have done that in the last year. Yes. And I don't have a problem with that. Okay. You know, if you're sending emails, we'd like to get a copy in the mayor's office so we know what's going on. You know, but sending emails directly to directors without copying the mayor's office, that's a problem. And if, you know, it's, uh, 10 calls a day to apartment director about questions, that'll become a problem and we'll deal with that if it becomes a problem. But I don't have a quite the problem with, with, uh, calls to department directors asking questions. Great. So is everybody good with that? Anybody have any problems with that, Ray?
Call him the chief. Cause he has lots of information. And we have a lot of social issues in my area because of the poverty we have. I like to call him and ask him about stuff all the time, you know? And, uh, I never order him to do anything because he, he won't do that anyway. But I like to talk to him to get his opinion about what's happening. And he's always been very cordial in answering my questions.
It hasn't been a problem. You know, I would have heard about it. And when I hear about it, then that's when I'm going to bring it back to you and say, hey, we got a problem. Yeah. So. Thank you. All right. If everybody's okay with that, uh, we'll move into the next part of the agenda. Nobody needs a break, do they? Okay, let's go on to the next part of the, the, uh, presentation, which is the Cultural Arts and Recreation District. And I'm going to turn it over, uh, to Council President Atencio.
Okay, I'm going to see if I can use those, uh, boards up there, is that okay? As far as law is concerned. There are two ways to fund that district. One is by mill levy. The other is by sales tax. How that gets funded is our responsibility. We'll decide that, or the voters will decide that, actually. Every special district, voters within that perimeter of that district are the ones that decide whether they want a district or not. So it goes to a vote of the people in the beginning. Our mill levy for the city of Pueblo is 15.633 mills. Of that, I believe we, uh, bring in a little over $15 million a year, which means one mill is worth about $1.1 million per mill. If we were to increase the mill levy, which is 15.633, to fund a district, that decision would have to be made. You don't have your books with you, but on page D80, non-departmental contractual payments. These include Chamber of Commerce, State Fair, HARP, Aircraft, Nature, Wildlife, Discovery Center, Human Relations Committee, Pueblo Zoo, Pueblo, uh, SRDA, Pike's Peak. These are all our contractual, uh, what it goes. We've also added in, uh, the art center. It's, they're not a contractual, uh, entity, but we put them as, as a line item. So depending on what organizations we want to fund with the district, we could then add those on to this. The contractual payments that we make are 3.8 mil- That's what we pay out of the general fund to, to fund these people. I'm going to put this in, but only for conversation's sake. The non-departmental health and welfare, that's the health department that we, uh, contribute money to. There's been a conversation over the last, since my first tenure on council, whether we should be doing that. We're the only city in the whole state that funds, helps fund the health department. That, huh? Say what? Okay, Lahana? Okay, uh, us and Lahana probably. Otherwise, that responsibility goes to the counties most, most, uh, if, let me add it in just for argument's sake. That's 800,000. And I'm, I'm rounding up and I'm rounding down, by the way. The other thing that we fund is contributions. And that amounts to 920,000. Okay? Altogether though, this adds, I'm rounding down, this is about $11 million. If we were to do a district and we were to fund these activities through the district, this $11 million could go back into the general fund. Right now, and with all due respect to the mayor and these, uh, sales tax for streets, my thinking is, and this is only my thinking, we spent 3, 3.4 million dollars on police. That's the quarter cent sales tax, or almost quartered. And then we spent another 2,800 on the, uh, uh, street tax, the enterprise. That's what, 6 million? Little over $6 million? If we had a arts and cultural district funded, then this 11 million, we wouldn't have any need for these. And my rationale is if we do a quarter cent sales tax for police and then we do a, uh, enterprise fee for streets, Lori wants to do an eight cent quarter sales tax for, uh, alleys and cleanup. Let's do another eight cent sales tax for, uh, beautification. That's not the way to run government piecemeal. That's not how to fund it. If we were to be able to do this, we would be able to fund this and then all the other activities that we would want to do within the city. Sure. Then I'm just, uh, just for argument's sake, this is 9 million, this is, uh, this is 800,000. This is 900,000. This is, oh, I'm sorry. Let me add one more thing to it. One more, let me add one more thing to it. for parks and rec. I didn't put that in. Add all those things in and it would be almost $11,000 right around there. So, yeah, thanks for that. There's a deficit this year of $7 million. Okay? Now, this is really stretching, but the decisions as to who to include in the district and how we're going to fund it and how much we're going to ask. Because sooner or later, we're going to have to ask our constituents for money to pay for the things that need to be paid. We're in dire need of a lot of infrastructure things and we're going to have to ask one way or the other. My thinking is this is the hard way to do it. That's 18 million dollars that we need to fund. Now, this going back in here accounts for some of that. So that 6 million, we wouldn't be asking the, uh, the constituents to pay for. So their obligation or their tax liability would be less by 6 million. Okay? Again, one mill is 1.1 million dollars. Depending on how we structure it, how we put it together, we could raise uh, the amount of money that we need to do this. The county's mill levy is 30 mills. Ours is 15. Now, I don't know what the percentages are of other cities and counties around the state, whether it's, uh, county mill levy is 30 mills and the city's mill levy is close to it. My thinking is that ours is really low compared to other cities. So our decision or our way of thinking, now, the mayor and I, uh, staff, chief of staff, talked about this. It might be a good idea to hire a consultant to look into this, to see if the feasibility, do a feasibility study as to whether it would be feasible to do it this way or continue with the, uh, individual taxes and fees that we're charging. My thinking is one way is better than two or three or four ways. Any question?
The mayor would like to do a, a tax on streets, correct Nick?
Sales.
A sales tax. And then we have this potential tax. And I think our decision might come down to which one are we going to do? Cause I don't think two are going to pass with the voters. So I think then the decision really gets hard. Which one do we want to do first? My pres, my personal opinion would do the culture and rec thing. We've already got cash flow coming in on the streets. Not enough that we, not as much as we'd like.
This $11 million put back into the general fund would take care of this streets and the infrastructure we need.
Okay.
I agree.
As long as there's no battle between which tax we want to charge.
That's a decision that city council and the mayor and staff everybody has to make. Which one would we be better off doing? Which one would be better off for our constituents?
I could do the good job, thank you.
I mean, I'm not pushing one or the other. I'm just saying that we should look at both and make the best decision as to whether, which, which road we want to go down. The, the object, the end objective is to making sure we get our streets done. The end, end objective is to make sure we take care of that structural deficit. The end objective is to make sure that we provide the services that we want to do for our constituents. How we do that is the question. No, because, no, because the, the police and infrastructure would go into the general fund. It would be funded from the general fund. The arts, cultural and recreation entities would be funded by the district. So there, and by the way, other cities like the Parks and Rec departments are still run by the city. They're just funded by the district. You know, we don't give up responsibility for any of these things. We just let them be funded. And from the arts and cultural people that I've talked to, they love the idea of having an arts, culture and recreation district. Because they don't really like the idea of coming to council every year asking for increases in their budgets or their, our contributions, I should say, rather than an arts, cultural and recreation district. If property taxes, property values increase, they know they're getting an increase in their in their contributions that they get marked. Well, you know, I'm absolutely the wrong person to ask about this. The, here, here's, here's my, what's completely shaking me up right now. Is you want to create eleven million or eighteen million dollars out of the mill levy? So what you're going to ask is every homeowner in Pueblo, Colorado to pay double in their, in, in their property taxes. How's that equitable? How is that, how does that even make sense that because I'm a homeowner now? And one of the reasons that I'm a homeowner in Pueblo, Colorado is one of the advantages of being a homeowner in Pueblo, Colorado is you're not socked in the, in the rear end when you pay your property taxes. Now I got a city council coming to me and saying, you know what? We want to expand our corporate welfare and we want you to pay double on your property tax to pay for nonprofits and all of this other stuff. There is no flipping way that the community would think that that was a, an equitable way to, to manage a city budget. We're actually not even going to affect the structural deficit. We're just going to charge you more so we can mismanage it.
No, that's not true.
Well, exactly, it's true. We're, we're asking me to double my homeowners, my homeowner tax so you don't have to manage the budget.
Mark, that was one of two ways suggested, not the only way suggested.
What's the other one? I missed that. Maybe I was in shock and I just didn't, maybe I just didn't get past.
I would say, I would say you're in shock.
Sales tax is another one.
And so what kind of sales tax now are you going to add to our already exorbitant sales tax to pay for eighteen million dollars a year?
But Mark, the thing about sales taxes, everybody from Lahana and Lamar pays. It's like, it's like if you bought a car and I agreed to pay for part of it.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness. Well, that, that is flawed logic at best to think that the towns and Lahana are going to pay for this.
They do, when they come and buy something in Pueblo.
Pay for this.
Yeah. I, I, I disagree with the fact that everybody coming to Pueblo is going to pay for things. Ms. Winter already has said, nobody likes to come here in the first place. So if that's true, there isn't anybody coming from out of town to go spend money here. Or it's very little, you know?
That's not what I said, by the way.
Well, I'm paraphrasing maybe, but my point is.
Well, it's an incorrect interpretation of paraphrasing.
One way or the other, we're going to have to ask our constituents to pay for the things that need to be done in the city. Whether we add another sales tax, an eight cent sales tax to clean up the city, another quarter cent sales tax for streets or whatever it might be, we're still going to have to ask the citizens of Pueblo to pay for the things that need to be paid. The structural deficit, we're still going to have to ask the citizens of Pueblo to pay for that, to bring us up to, to what it got. You want a five-year goal of reducing that deficit? One way or the other, we're going to have to ask our constituents to pay for it. Whether they do it by sales tax or whether they do it by property tax, those are the only two. By fees, I suppose we can add fees at law.
Well, my constituents say they do pay for it. They're just asking us to manage it.
And I guess we'll all have a chance to vote on this later.
We'll have to vote on it later. That basically, these are two ideas as to how to do it. How do we do it?
Any other questions, Ray? Ed, do you have anything?
Dennis? Yeah, I just wanted to say, again, I'm going to go back to the city of Fort Collins. They, they formed a recreational and sports district. And, and they did it for a completely different reason. They did it because there was so much bureaucracy in the community of eight soccer leagues, three Bannum leagues. Most of the money that was going into athletics for the kids in Fort Collins was going to help them manage all of this. And so they formed one district to be more efficient. And, and, and so we probably could do the same in Pueblo if we sold it the right way.
Well, they also added a increased their property tax, they did buy a mill levy and they increased it. And their recreational facilities in Fort Collins are top notch.
Yeah. By any way, I mean, there's also other reasons besides, you know, the taxes.
Oh, yes, sure. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mayor, oh, no, Ray had something, hold on one second, right? The thing of it is, it seems rather simple to me to have a recreation center because we already have eleven million dollars. We have one third of the total cost of a recreation center. So it's all we have to do is identify the other two thirds. And so it seemed like to me that that was an easier way to do it for us to go out and be able to identify the other two thirds. And so that's why I like the idea of using the eleven million dollars that the HARP has from a project that they have. So that's what, that's what I'm thinking. I'm trying to figure a way to do it the cheapest possible way. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, well, you know, generally, I think that an arts and culture district is not a bad idea. I'm not sure, I'll be limited to the city of Pueblo. And I've had this conversation with Councilor Atencio about engaging in conversations with Pueblo County if we're going to have that kind of arts and cultural district. Let me tell you some of my concerns. When I, you know, every couple of years, we do a survey and it's theoretically a scientific survey of our citizens and they, they tell us how they're feeling about things. I didn't bring the whole, well, I guess I didn't bring the whole survey book. You might recall, it looks something like this. Community survey where they ask some questions, they break it down by demographics and things like that. And we ask them certain things, you know, what are you concerned about in the city of Pueblo? Generally, the citizens in Pueblo were pretty happy with the recreational facilities they have. We ask them, what would, how, would you be, what's your willingness to support a sales tax to increase or address the following? You know, a downtown community recreation center is near the bottom of their willingness to have a sales tax to do that. The, so I think that those are the sort of things I think we need to look at a little bit in terms of that. I think we're going to have those discussions about a whole arts and culture district that probably, and you recall, was it six or seven years ago, time flies when you're having fun? We had a special ballot proposal countywide to impose a half cent sales tax for cultural and charitable organizations. And it got overwhelmingly defeated. I forget, there were fifteen or twenty organizations that were part of that that the city and county cooperated in and just didn't go anywhere. So I think we have to be careful about that as we move forward.
Three times. People were against the convention center and we built it and it's turned out to be a huge success. So I think we can misread those, that data that comes in on stuff like that. But I, I can, I can only say by what I've seen in Commerce City and all those communities that are smaller than we are, and they built thirty-five, forty million dollar recreation centers because they felt that that's what their people needed. And that's what I feel people in Pueblo need. Thank you.
Well, it should be said that like Fort Collins, they built in a capital construction component when they did their mill levy increase. That'd be done for a community center. And it could also be done, it doesn't have to be a tax that goes on forever. That component could be a five-year portion, it could be a ten year, whatever we decide we, how we want to structure.
Thank you. Those are great, those are great points.
Think about one way and think about doing that, that consultant and do a feasibility study on it and see what happens. Because we, we have to look at different ways to fund the things that we need to do. That structural deficit, that has to be taken care of. How are we going to do it? The only way we're going to do it, and you find seven million dollars in that budget to cut, and I guarantee you, we're going to cut seven million dollars worth of services to our constituents. You know, and we're behind on that anyway. I think the mayor told me we've got forty-some positions in the, in, in our workforce that haven't been filled. That's forty-seven people that are not providing services to our community. What, what's the percentage? Six, seven, eight percent of our workforce? That's six, seven percent that our community is not receiving services. That's sizable.
I sure haven't been getting any complaints about it.
Well, they're used to it already.
Yeah. My perception is you're doing a fantastic job.
Streets and roads, beautification, streets and alleys, trash. Everything, yeah.
We are doing a good job and we do get complaints.
I think you are doing a fantastic job.
Anyway, something to think about. I think that feasibility study is probably a really good idea to continue on.
Lori, did you have anything you wanted to say? No? All right, so great work, Larry. Look forward to hearing your progress. We're now going to break for lunch and we'll be back at twelve forty-five. We're back on schedule.
Go ahead and get started with our afternoon session. I'm down here in front of you because I have a hard time when I'm sitting at my desk. I try to look at everybody and I can't look at everybody. So I, Scott Hobson and I are going to do a presentation, community development. And specifically, this presentation and what we're talking to you about this afternoon is on residential home building. This is going to be our emphasis. And what I wanted to spend a few minutes with you before Mr. Hobson comes and gives you a report is to let you know how I got here and, and, and put this stuff together that's going to come before you here shortly. Three years ago, I was approached by some home builders that were very concerned about the city of Pueblo had instead of increased their home building at a time when the economy was robust and other communities all up and down the front range were having record number of years of building homes. Pueblo was stuck in this rut of only doing about eighty to a hundred and fifty homes a year. And I want you to put this into perspective where we were at the time that we start, that I started this conversation. We're in an economy that was booming when it came to building. And we had to understand or find out what were the reasons that were keeping Pueblo, Colorado from being in this boom? So graciously, city council allowed myself and council president Atencio to start what was called the community development committee. And this was started about two and a half years ago, I believe, is the, the timeframe that we've been in this. And we brought together department heads. Mr. Hobson from planning and development. We had Public Works has been, been involved with this, Wastewater's been involved with this, Stormwater's been involved with this. But most importantly, this group, this community development group has had numerous home builders and developers as a part of the group. And our goal, as we put this group together, was to figure out as a community what's happening with our home building? How come we're not building more homes? Well, like any problem that faces a city, there's never one easy answer. There's never, you know, you'd like to be able to go into one of those problems and say, oh, yeah, that's it. If we fix that, we're going to automatically start building, you know, thousands of homes a year and, and we're going to move forward as a city and we'll fix that. But what we found as we got into this is that this is a very complex issue that's going to take very complex answers and, and ideas to get us out of where we're at today. So the community development people, and, and let me clarify this. The mayor's office, we've worked very closely with the mayor's office, the chief of staff through all of our, our, our discussions has been nothing but forthcoming and supportive of everything that we've done so far. So we spent a lot of time looking at specific issues. One of the major issues that we came up with was personnel. Obviously, whenever you have a problem, you can have all of the best processes in the world put in place. But most of the time, it's the people that cause the problem. We came up with a plan that we were going to do some training and do a paradigm shift within the city. A paradigm shift, and let me explain what that would be. I always use the story of the car business. In the car business, you have the sales department, part of that sales department, uh, sales department is a finance department. So the sales managers and the salespeople put deals together. And then, once they put the deal together, they take it to the finance manager. So finance manager's responsibility to get the deal done. Get it financed, make the people happy, sign them up and get them out of there, right? What happens is a metamorphosis within the finance department. You take a deal to the finance department and you put it in front of them, they're not happy because they're just looking for reasons why it's not a deal. Well, this guy can't buy because of this. This lady can't buy because of this. Oh, this is a problem, why did you do this? Everything was a problem. So within our company, we had to do this paradigm. So within our company, we had to do this paradigm shift of saying when we bring you a deal, all you need to look at is how you can get it done. What can you do to make this deal happen? Don't tell us how it's not a deal. Tell us how it is a deal. Well, in our committee, we, we decided that that might be something that we need to do as a community and as a city, is that when home builders and developers come to us, we need to look at their developments and their, their plans of not what's wrong with them, but how can we make it happen? So with the help of the mayor's office and chief of staff Solano, uh, we put together a training program where we, and even the county was gonna be involved in this. And the training program was gonna be on customer service, correct? And we were gonna, going to start the process of changing attitudes on how to look at developments and home building. But guess what happened? Covid. Covid hit it, that's, that hasn't happened yet, but it's going to happen and it's still part of the plan. But I'm talking about specific things we're looking at to try and move the needle and make things happen. We have gone to numerous meetings and we've looked at numerous ways to change things. Uh, and Scott's gonna talk a little bit about the things that we've implemented that are going to make a difference. But what I wanna talk about today after we're done with the presentation is that we as a city council need to be very involved in this process. And we need to be supportive of the staff, the mayor's office in moving forward and moving the needle on home building. And I'm gonna get, I'm gonna tell you a reason why. Hand me those sheets right there, please. Yeah. So why is it so important, well, to Pueblo, Colorado to start building homes? This we just pulled off of the National Association of Home Builders. This is the effect on a community to build a hundred single-family homes. And they took some assumptions that aren't true to the city of Pueblo, such as their sales tax they used as one point five percent and the, uh, the median price of a house of three hundred and eighty thousand, I believe. But the point of this is, is to say, these are the dynamic undeniable economic development, uh, numbers that happen when you build a hundred homes. Twenty-eight point seven million in local income. Three point six million in taxes and other revenue for local governments and three hundred and ninety-four local jobs. Not to mention the additional annually recurring impacts of building a hundred single-family homes in a typical local area is four point, an additional four point one in lo- local, uh, income, one million in taxes and sixty-nine local jobs. That's a hundred homes. Does that to a community? When Scott's done, it's gonna really blow your mind of the opportunity that we have as a community here in Pueblo, uh, to make something happen. Other things that are happening in the community is that Commissioner Ortiz and the city are working on the, uh, Pueblo Means Business, the Pueblo Means Business Task Force. We've all been talking about the Wells Fargo Building and bringing these building departments and everything together and making it easier for development and making it easier to, uh, uh, do business within the city of Pueblo. Petco and the, the city and the county are working very hard on the One Pueblo Project, which brings everybody together to make something happen in economic development. In a meeting with One Pueblo last week, I made the point that foundational to jobs, foundational to everything that happens within a community is home building and availability of these homes. If you don't have that, you could have all of the best processes. You can have all of the best economic development team in the country. If you don't have places for workers to live, they're not coming here. It's just not going to happen. If we wanna grow as a community, we have to build homes. Uh, in a recent conversation with Jeff Shaw, who's the president of Petco, I asked him, what's the, what would make it so much easier for Pueblo to be able to attract large companies and to create jobs? He says, get us to two hundred thousand people. Once you get to two hundred thousand people, it's in his opinion that the economic development process is a game changer in what you're able to attract as a community. So as we talk about goals and we talk about moving Pueblo, the thing that will make the difference, you wanna make the di- a, a difference to the deficit? You wanna make a difference to everything that has to do with money in Pueblo, Colorado? Build homes. Build homes. So you might be asking yourself, Scott, come on up. And I know you're asking yourself. What I've asked Scott to do to, today is to give us an overview. Councilor Flores made a point earlier in the day and he says, you know, you wanna look at some low, low hanging fruit? And what we can do as a city right away? Uh, Scott Hobson's gonna talk about inventory and what's available right now in the city of Pueblo to build. So Scott, you go ahead.
Thanks, Mark. Gerald, were you, do you put the slides, okay, perfect. So Mark talked about the, uh, there we go. Thank you. Uh, Mark talked about the, uh, Committee for Community Development that's been meeting for just over a couple of years and what we kind of have looked at, uh, as part of that committee. So you're gonna go to the first, okay, the first slide here is a map that, uh, that we keep, uh, on, on file and inactive within the planning department that identifies areas that have been annexed into the city but have not been subdivided. And these are areas that are, for the most part, ninety percent of these areas are slated for future residential development. So as you can see, we have four thousand three hundred and forty-one acres. And really, to a large extent, they, they wrap the city except for the southeast area of, uh, where the steel mill is. So we have an inventory of lands that are within the city's boundaries, uh, that have the capability of being developed for residential development. When these properties were annexed, uh, as part of the annexation process, we go through an analysis of being able, can the city provide city services to these areas? And all of these areas have the ability to be able to have water service. Uh, can, for the, can be connected to our wastewater system and are, are linked, uh, through our long-range transportation plan to be able to have roadways, roadways that connect to our existing services. So this is where we, we stand i- in a position to be able to have these developments be able, uh, to be developed in, into the future. What we found out from the members of the committee, the development community, the engineers, the real estate, uh, people that are involved with this committee. What we found out, well, though, was there were some impediments or are impediments to being able to have properties able to be developed and it's the cost of the infrastructure to be able to be in place. So the cost of building roads, uh, sidewalks, the, uh, water sewer, all of the infrastructure that's needed to be able to cover the cost for, for a developer. And what we found out is, one of the reasons these properties have, uh, have not been subdivided and not have really developed in a timely manner is that the cost to pay for the infrastructure currently in most cases doesn't cover the cost of what these properties would sell for. So they're not gonna make any money, uh, based on what those costs are. So we did an analysis of, uh, Coral Springs, El Paso County Fountain to see, well, are there standards that, uh, we are imposing in Pueblo that are stricter, greater standards than what we have in the areas adjacent to us to the north that are seeing a lot of development? And, uh, so based on that, uh, we, we, we got that information, uh, at least for the roadway standards and so we started with areas that, uh, some of the areas that have had subdivisions, but those subdivisions have not been developed for sometimes ten to fifteen years or essentially stalled undeveloped subdivision areas. And so the, one of the things we really focused on was have we properly assigned the right, uh, classification for the roadways that are gonna be servicing these subdivided areas, these new areas? And, uh, the city has, I think, done a relatively good job over the years, but we really didn't have the data and the information to be able to really document and verify what, what size of roads, what's the traffic gonna be when these areas build out? So, um, we um, assigned a different ta- a, a separate additional task to the, to the, uh, transportation company that was doing the PACOG Long Range Transportation Plan. And they're also the company that developed the travel demand model. So the model that projects what the traffic is gonna be as the city ends, as the city would grow. And so what, what we did was in specific areas, we, we took two areas of the city. The first one was the Banderas Boulevard corridor. And that's what this map, uh, shows here. So there's two and a half miles that's between Thatcher Highway ninety-six and Northern State Highway seventy-eight. And then there's another mile and a half that extends south of Northern Avenue through El Camino area and then down through, uh, the area that we've annexed as past to our ranch. And so based on our future land use plan, uh, the, uh, development that's currently happening and the size of the, of the residential, the lots, we assigned build-out numbers. And in, uh, the Banderas Corridor, I think we have six planning areas and we assigned at full build-out the residences that would access Banderas Boulevard as the primary roadway that would, um, go in and out of those developments. And then, uh, then we took those, uh, residential unit numbers and then provided those to the tra- travel demand model engineers. And what they did was they went back and said, if this, if all these areas built out, what would be the traffic volumes on Banderas Boulevard at full build-out? And, uh, what other traffic might pass through the area? So what we, what we ended up finding out in, in this area was that we currently classify Banderas Boulevard as a minor arterial roadway uh, for this entire four-mile section. And what we found from the numbers from the, from the more detailed look from the travel demand model is that our, at full build-out, the travel demand, uh, classification for what type of roadway we should have there is really more of a mixed-use collector standard. This is giving us the, the data and the information to be able to go back and in some cases provide direction if these areas are not platted of what the widths of the right-of-way would be. What the widths of the pavement sections are going to be for each of those roadways. In some cases, these properties are already platted, especially, uh, the north end of, of Banderas Boulevard and, and the far south end, so the two ends of the corridor. Um, so you may not go back and replat those, but you could, the city could reduce the pavement widths for what would need to be built and paid for by the developers as these areas are developing. And the information we have on Banderas Corridor is for sure, the area between Northern and Thatcher, we would be able to reduce the right-of-way by twenty-four feet. And we, we'd be, would be able to reduce the pavement section that would handle all the traffic at full build-out from sixty-seven feet to forty-four feet. And so, um, and I, let me give you another example of what we looked at. These are the numbers. This, that's not that interesting, but this is the Eagle Ridge Outlook area. And we had some specific, some developers that specifically own some of these properties. Uh, subdivisions that were just not making any headway to give development, but they were platted and there should that we should be able to build out these, these areas. And so we did the same type of analysis with the Eagle Ridge and Outlook area, divided into the seven different planning areas. You kinda can see the handwritten notes on there, but anyway, we determined how many residential units at full build-out would be in each of these areas. And then we provided that information to our transportation, uh, consultants and they provided a travel model of how much traffic each of these main collector arterial or principal arterials would have, would, would have at full build-out. And so what we found out is, for example, Outlook Built Boulevard, once you get north of Eagle Ridge, really is not gonna have the traffic volume to warrant a uh, minor arterial standard of roadway. It could be built at a collector, mixed-use collector roadway standard. Also, in our roadway standards, our classifications, we have three types of, of collector roadways already in our standards. But we weren't providing the detail of which of those three standards we ought to really follow. In each, each standard, there's a, a neighborhood collector, a mixed-use collector and a business collector. We really weren't providing the information or looking at the data that we now have available to be able to specifically identify what standard or what classification of our collector roadway. And there's a big difference because a residential uh, collector is a sixty-foot right-of-way and I'm probably not gonna remember all of the actual width, but it's a narrower width. And then a mixed-use collector is an eighty-foot right-of-way and that would have a forty-four foot width. And then a business collector is really pretty similar to an arterial. But knowing the traffic volumes at full build-out is critical in assigning which of the three, one of those categories, uh, we were able to do. We have the ability to do that and with the help of the development committee and with city staff, the transportation department, the public works department, we now are taking this information and looking at the annexation agreements that go with each of these developments. Uh, in some cases, the annexation agreements specifically identify a classification of roadway. And so we're gonna have to look at how can we modify and amend these agreements? It, the areas that have already been subdivided all have, uh, subdivision improvement agreement contracts that specify, um, the width of right-of-ways, the width of pavements, all of the specific infrastructure requirements that are in this, in the agreement and in the anticipated cost. We're looking at amending those subdivision improvement agreements administratively through the public works department to be able to make it more affordable, uh, for developments to be able to be constructed. for developments to be able to be constructed. And this is one piece, as Councilman Edith was saying, this is one piece of the puzzle to be able to consider looking at reducing development costs on these developments. For example, in the Eagle Ridge Outlook area, Ridge Street, as you, between Outlook and, let's see, between Outlook and Wills, it really only will carry at full build-out a neighborhood collector standard of roadway. That's a dramatic difference from our other standards that we've been following. In width of pavement, and where properties have not been planted or the right-of-way hasn't been planted, we can narrow that right-of-way down. So we've been working with developers to be able to start implementing that. We've had two developers so far that have amended their subdivision improvement agreements and are looking at moving forward with their development. So this is really positive news, and it's something that we want to be able to continue to follow through with. So, do you want me to go on any other? I told Mark I can really go on the weeds on this, but I didn't think you wanted me to. But that's the gist of what we're looking at as far as how to specifically work with the development community with the right data to be able to adjust our agreements and our standards to be able to help housing be able to be more affordable.
And I think, one thing you guys need to know as a council is that Mr. Hobson's work on these roads and what we've done in that Community Development Committee, most recently, there was a project in Eagle Ridge that's going to happen because of that. So, you know, there's three or 400 homes that are going to get built because of that work that got done. And when you get to the Banderas Parkway and those areas, those deals become doable deals because of the work that that committee and Mr. Hobson has done to work on just the roads. Now, we're just talking about the roads. There's obviously tons of other pieces to it that can also get put in place and changes can be made. And I wanted you to, just for a second, to look at the big page. This one right here, with that Banderas Parkway work. That's 3,434 units, 3,434 units. Okay? A unit being a home, right? A lot. If the city of Pueblo, based on the National Association of Home Builders' numbers, would develop, make it easy to get those developed, that would mean $975 million of local income, okay? But here's the big one for us as a body. $34 million in annual taxes created by those homes, just right there in those projects along Banderas Parkway. Now, throw in Eagle Ridge. Throw in that Eagle Ridge area, that these places are already subdivided. Most of them, I believe, are subdivided in Eagle Ridge, or at least annexed in and ready to go, right?
It's probably 60%, 60% are subdivided, 40% still need to be subdivided.
That takes us, if you did just both those developments, both those developments would bring in $1.7 billion in local dollars, and would bring in $62 million annually in tax revenue. So I know that we talk about sales tax, and we talk about deficits, and we talk about budgets. But right in front of us, right in front of us, is the opportunity as a community to grab onto this vision and say that we will never be anything other than what we are if we don't build out these lots. If we don't do everything within our power as a community, and it takes everybody, it takes the mayor, it takes city council, it takes Public Works, it takes planning, it takes wastewater, it takes stormwater, it takes the fire department, it takes the police department, it takes everybody to grab the vision and say that we're going to move ourselves to another place. And we're finally, after 50 or 60 years of zero growth, we're going to start growing our community and selling it for what it really is, the greatest place in Colorado to live and to do business and to work. And it's right there in front of us. The roads were just one thing that needed to be dealt with. And it's being dealt with, and it's going to make a difference in several of these. But as Mr. Hobson talked about, there are specifics. Let me just give you an example, because you're all very familiar with this. I think everybody got the email the other day from somebody who, and I'm not going to use names, but somebody who was doing a remodel job on an existing business in the city of Pueblo. And we have one department telling the customer that it's okay, and another department saying it's not okay. We got one department saying it meets state code, but it doesn't meet city code. If city code doesn't match up with state code, we've got a problem. Why is it? Why is it that we have more stringent codes than the state of Colorado? And why does one entity within the city of Pueblo say that it's okay while another entity says that it's not? That's a problem. That's a problem that we need to address as a community. I mean, it's something that we have to get into the weeds, and we have to look at these building codes, we have to look at these requirements that we put on these people. Joe O'Brien went, let me tell you another simple part of what the Community Development Committee did. Joe O'Brien went to the, we had them do five-foot sidewalks in developments because of the ADA and the American Disabilities Act. And the local, we have a strong local branch of the ADA. And part of the agreement was that we would build five-foot sidewalks. But five-foot sidewalks in a development can cost millions of dollars as opposed to a four-foot sidewalk. Well, the Community Development Committee went to the ADA and got them to agree to let us go back to four-foot sidewalks. It's going to make a huge difference in a lot of these developments and being able to move forward with getting these done. But these are the things that we need to be thinking about and the things that we need to grasp onto to move forward. And it's going to take an effort by every single person. I'm just one city councilman. I'm one-seventh of the body. One-seventh of the body. And what I'm asking is that these things need to become a priority for us. And that in this priority, everything that we do is working towards getting these lots built, getting these Eagle Ridge lots built, and adding $62 million to our budget. Can you, I mean, I just, you can't even fathom how much money this is, just sitting there, waiting to happen, waiting to happen. Pardon? Yeah, yeah. You know, it's a game changer. It's a game changer for us as a community. And I don't think that you'll find anybody that will argue that point except for people who like it the way that it is. And there are people like that, I'm sure, that like it the way that the city is and the way that it's going, they don't want to grow. But for us to be successful and for us to get out of this rut that we're in, this has to happen. It has to happen. And I think that, under the mayor's leadership, that the department heads that are working on this have been nothing but supportive and moving forward with trying to make changes. So my hat goes off to the mayor and all of the department heads, because they've been nothing but positive and helpful in making this move forward. But we're going at a snail's pace. We're going at a snail's pace. I'll be dead for 20 years at this pace we're going on before we ever start building these out. This is something, in my opinion, that needs to happen now. And so, Scott, I guess the big question I would have before I shut up and let everybody else talk is, what's it going to take for us as a community to get this done quickly?
For just the part that I talked about related to the transportation, the Public Works Department is currently reviewing our roadway classification standards that are adopted by city council. The last time that they were amended was, I believe, 2005. And so, that's underway today. And one of the things is that these traffic volumes, we never had those on the charts as far as this classification of roadway should be able to handle traffic between this number and this number daily traffic. Those, now we have the information from the analysis that was provided by the consultants. So part of that, part of those classifications will be tied to specific travel volumes so that we can have better information for decisions on the classification standards for roadways. That's one big step. And that's what we're using with developers. We have a residential development that is east of the university that was just pretty much kind of sitting there for, I don't know, five, almost 10 years. And they are now looking at developing around 90 homes, have 90 homes developed in that subdivision. As part of that review, we didn't necessarily have to go into that area and do travel analysis. But we did go in and have them re-phase the timing of when different roadways needed to be built. And the Public Works Department worked with them really closely, and they amended their subdivision improvement agreement. And they're going to be pulling building permits this summer for starting those houses. So that's really what we need to start looking at, is where we can work quickly is amending these agreements. In some cases, we are looking specifically with developers to amend their annexation agreements, to bring those in line with our new analysis. Those are things, we can do that. We are already starting to work on that. And so, those are really the main first steps. One of the things council has done, just to remind you during the past year, is as part of the Community Development Committee review, we analyzed or we looked at the areas of the city that were on the map of the 4,000-some acres, those developments that had overhead power lines that, under our city codes, they had to bury those as part of the subdivision. So we analyzed and found three areas that were in the, within that 4,000-acre area. We worked with Black Hills and two of the developers to come up with a cost, and council approved the use of our underground funds to be able to put those overhead lines in our public right-of-ways within those developments. Those are going to be savings of over $800,000 combined for those developments. So those things are already happening, and that's what we're going to continue to try to work on.
And Mr. Hobson, would you, just with the number of the unannexed available property, how many units are out there for things that could come into the city and be, and be housing developments?
If you looked at the 4,130, I think that came out to, right out are just over 15,000 residential units, which would have added, at full build-out, 30,000 more population to the city. So we have already, without annexing another acre of residential property in the city, we have the capability of increasing our population by 30,000 people. Now, some of these areas are more challenging and more expensive to develop than others. And one of the things that we're having the consultants for the regional long-range comprehensive plan work on is a fiscal analysis to be able to give us an idea of what areas might be more, have more obstacles for development than others within this 4,000-acre area, so that it can give council and staff some direction on where might development likely, from an economic standpoint, be more, could work to be able to just economically be developed.
Questions, comments? Mr. Schelling?
Thank you. And Mark, you and Scott did a great job. In fact, you did such a good job that I could see where people get really excited, and let's just get this done, you know? But remember, guys, developers develop and they move on, okay? And I wrote up here, you know, growth, what is smart growth? Well, who knows what smart growth is? Everybody has a different opinion of what that thing is. Point being that, we want to, I want to grow as fast as we can. Well, I do and I don't. I really like being able to drive home in 15 minutes from wherever I am in town. But I am all for this, but we can't go at it like the gold rush where, jeez, everybody get on board. And like Mark said, you're right most of the time. But in this case, you have to be careful of saying, I don't care what you don't like. Tell, just tell us how to make it get done. We have to be careful of that, in my mind, be careful of that mentality. So I'm all for everything you've done, and the amount of work you two guys did is spectacular. And hopefully, these are enough things that you continue to come up with that create the encouragement to developers, because it's all a matter of dollars. And if you've got to do roads, I would assume all the infrastructure the city does, I've mentioned, the Water Board has to be involved. So you guys have picked a big tax, but I think you're doing a great job on it. And Scott, you are, I think, helping us move on planning and zoning to get, make things easier is what we're trying to do. Again, don't bum brush this thing and skip common sense while we're doing it. Want it to happen as fast as possible, but use common sense when it happens. Thank you.
So could I just respond to Bob? No, actually, we have not necessarily reduced our standards for what is required for single-family houses. And so, yes, we'd like to see a lot more building permits pulled, but we also are not really reducing our standards to any degree of what those houses are going to look like, the way those neighborhoods are going to develop. We're maintaining the standards that we'd like to have for the city for, I guess what they would say, smart growth type of development.
A great thought, and I forgot it.
Councilor Flores?
Yes. When you move forward with these modifications and these administrative amendments, changing the requirements to roadways, et cetera, when you talk to developers, is that enough of an incentive for them to potentially make a commitment that they're going to be able to make it work then? I know that, since I live in, off the Banderas roadway or Parkway, I know that we lost the, I think, the large church on the south side, Rocky Mountain, you know, which one I'm talking about. They purchased a large piece of land there, near the cemetery. And we're going to build a huge church there, and that roadway prevented them from developing. They were also going to develop lots on the east side of Banderas. And there was a big newspaper article about it, but that could have been about eight years ago. Has anybody talked to them and seen whether or not that, I mean, that's, I mean, that could be a $10 million, $12 million church. But anyway, I mean, can we get commitments from these developers if we do some of these changes? Or is the demand that high?
I don't know that we'll actually, we won't get commitments till we start seeing, building, single-family building plans in the city. Although, I think, one of the things that we're also looking at besides modifying the subdivision improvement agreement requirements is that we're looking at adjusting the phasing of which these improvements are going to be required. And certainly, whatever is built, we have to have the public improvements that works and provide for safe neighborhoods. But one of the things that we have noticed is that, for example, in the Villabella neighborhood, east of the university, it wasn't necessarily changing standards of roadway classifications, it was being able to adjust the phasing plan within their subdivision improvement agreement that allowed them to not have improvement agreement that allowed them to not have to build certain roads, uh, as quickly, when they started to develop, but provide enough of roadway, uh, infrastructure that was satisfactory to meet the safety requirements for those, for those homes. And that became more of the trigger that really got that development going.
Right. Well, I've got, I'm, I'm impressed. Uh, if I was thinking about my idea of starting to use data, I think you guys have just proven how valuable information and data is to be making these decisions. I really congratulate you, Councilor Aleph and Mr. Hobson, for moving this forward. I think this is really a huge change for our community that could really pay dividends. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Bandera Parkway seems to be a big thing to get that area developed, so we, how are we gonna finance that and we just gonna do, do it a piece at a time, I assume?
The way the annexation agreements and the subdivision improvement agreements are set up, that as subdivisions are approved, uh, by the city, then specific segments will, will be, um, required to be developed in order for, uh, certificates of occupancy and for people to be able to, um, get residency in those houses. Some of the corridor, probably a quarter, twenty-five percent, especially the area, maybe forty percent or more of the area between Northern Avenue and Thatcher is not even annexed into the city yet. So those would be areas that, as they come in, we'll be looking at, uh, requirements. But one of the things that we are likely not to include or wouldn't include in those agreements are the standards that are currently in some of the agreements for the developments that are kind of on the north and south end of the Bandera corridor between Thatcher and, and, uh, and Northern. So that's, that's the way we would, we would approach it, but, you know, we, we'll have to really, you know, those are, those areas, that forty percent there, is not even part of that four thousand one hundred acres, so, um, I think it's gonna be kind of how the market, uh, reacts to, uh, new buildings. And, uh, in a lot of cases, what Mark was saying, it's not just, it's not just the roads, um, in a lot of cases, uh, the cost to get, to be hooked up to the city's sanitary sewer system is a great, a huge stumbling block, um, on the affordability of, or just the, being, having a developer be able to recover the costs, uh, through lot sales of a development. And there are certain developments that, that really is still gonna hinder their ability to, to, to start, uh, getting building permits, uh, before others. Some of them are much more affordable, others have, uh, much more difficult infrastructure. We know with, within Pueblo, we have all these drainage arroyos that go down to the Arkansas River. Well, the cost to cross these arroyos, the cost from a drainage standpoint, uh, those become big hindrances in some of these developments. We looked at it, we saw the overhead power lines as a big, is a way to be able to help to, help some of these developments, but a lot of the developments that, uh, didn't have the, the overhead power lines, they've got the arroyos. So, so they, they all have their intricacies of, of, uh, challenges for development, and where we can, we're gonna work with them, we're gonna keep a positive attitude, uh, with the development community of what can we do within, uh, our regulations and our ability to be flexible, to work with them, to try to be able to come up with plans that, uh, can start and improve development. Currently, just in the last, uh, I think we're sixty, we were sixty-six days into this year when I had our, our staff look at it, our single-family building permits, uh, are about just under double where we were last year. Last year, we did a hundred and fifty. At the rate we're going, we'll do about two ninety based on the first sixty-six days of, of this year. So there is some improvement, but I'm sure it's not, I think the expectation is to have quite a bit more.
I want, you know, he brought up a great question, and I just wanted to, to, to elaborate on it. What I hope to achieve out of this is, is that when we look at developments as a city, and let's say it's a hundred-unit development, and there's a million dollars that's, that's keeping this development from moving forward, whether it's in a sewer line or, uh, you know, a stormwater, whatever, I, I think, hopefully, we're looking at the big picture when it comes, and that was the point of these numbers. If a hundred units creates four point six million dollars in local taxes to the, to the community, and a million dollars a year for the rest of the time that that, that development is in place, is it smart for the city to invest a million dollars with the developer and get the, 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 uh, storage, the sewage line in or the, the cables buried or whatever, whatever that may be? And so what I'm saying and what I'm trying to, to reiterate here is that we have to start looking at things differently, rather than just saying, you know, that's not gonna work, you're gonna have to do that, and then we never hear from that developer again, rather than sitting down and working with the developer and saying, "Well, maybe, just maybe, if we threw in five hundred grand to help pay half the cost of that, uh, you could develop these hundred, we have this commitment to develop these hundred, uh, lots." We, as a city council and as a city, should be looking at that and being able to make a decision, saying, "I'm willing to invest a million dollars to make fifty million." We'd be stupid if we didn't, is my, is my whole point there. And we have to keep, quit turning developers away with all of our infrastructure needs when we can help out with those infrastructure. That's just the point I was trying to make. Uh, Bob?
The question, Scott. Over in El Camino, they have a special district, right? And we approve their mill every, every year. So can you not create special districts to put in the sewer and water and that sort of thing and then pay it back through the development, like they are on the landscaping over in El Camino?
So Bandera Maintenance, uh, Bandera has a district that is, collects a tax for, uh, maintaining that, but that's a, that's a really good point, uh, Councilman Schelling, that, you know, thirty-five years ago, um, a lot of the infrastructure, maybe we'll go forty or fifty years back or so, but this, when, when the city was converting over to where we actually had a wastewater system, the city used improvement, created improvement districts for, uh, wastewater systems, for parks, uh, and, uh, you have to create them through, uh, uh, votes of the residents within the district, the dis, the residents would have to, uh, approve, being, paying property taxes, and then the city issued bonds for specific infrastructure improvements. And, uh, statewide, kind of as special districts came in place from in the, in the sixties and into the seventies, these improvement districts were less favorable, but that is an option, it's in our, in our codes, uh, and we've brought it up to some of the council members over the years, uh, we've talked about park development in certain areas of the city and, um, being able to create improvement districts, but you can do it for roads, any of the public infrastructure, there is the ability to look at potentially creating improvement districts.
And that's? The answer was yes.
Yeah, that's, the answer is yes, and that's exactly what they're doing in North Vista, uh, and the Walkin' Stick up there. They have, I don't know, five or six special improvement districts up there that they're gonna phase in for the purpose of, um, paying for that infrastructure that they're gonna put in as part of that development. Uh, let me just add that this is obviously a problem that's been developing for, I don't know, thirty years, twenty years, ten years. And I think what you need to keep in mind is all these subdivisions here, the developer signed subdivision improvement agreements agreeing to do the things that we're now saying, you know, you said you would do these things vis-à-vis the roadways and things like that. And as we look back and as I looked at it, you know, I said, "Boy, some of this doesn't make any sense in terms of, you know, why are we gonna make them build a roadway now that, uh, that might not be necessary for a hundred years?" Maybe what we need is that right-of-way for a hundred-year roadway, but they only have to construct a roadway that we need now or for the next ten or twenty years. And that will make a financial difference to some of these developers. There aren't any guarantees, and certainly, uh, developers want the city to pay, uh, for as much as they, as the city will pay. But, you know, my philosophy is we wanna make it easier for these developments to take place, easier for people to do business here, without really lowering our standards, but, uh, making sure that the neighborhoods they're gonna build are, are good neighborhoods. But I've, you know, we've had some discussions with some developers that, uh, wanna put, um, modular homes in. And, you know, probably those aren't good, a good fit in neighborhoods, but if there's a subdivision where you got a cul-de-sac and they wanna put these modular homes just lengthwise on these lots rather than have the front door face the, the cul-de-sac, you know, I'm willing to explore that and say to them, you know, if that, if that will work and people wanna do that, because that gets them into that housing market, I'll take a look at that. But, uh, we, we're trying to be flexible and do that, but, uh, you know, as I say, these things have been developing for a long time, and I don't think that's gonna cha, um, turn things around overnight. What's happening is that, uh, demand, uh, is, uh, outpacing supply. So as prices go up on homes, you're gonna see more and more people want to be building homes. And there's no doubt in my mind that even if we left all these standards where they are right now, at some point, the prices will be high enough that they'll be happy to do that, because they'll be able to sell that house for a lot of money. So it's, uh, it, it's sort of a balancing act in terms of, you know, making the thing go and the demand for homes. That's one of the reasons why they haven't built a lot of homes in the past, 'cause there wasn't a lot of demand. But now, there is, uh, and it, it's working.
So, uh, I'm gonna butt in one more time, and I'm sorry. So Scott, you said special districts would work, so that's great. So is that something we can use now as a tool then, to suggest to them, or has it already been done and they're not interested?
I think the, the newer developments we've seen the last, uh, two or three years, I think the creation of, of, uh, special districts, uh, through Title Thirty-two, um, I think some of those have been options that they've, they've been looking at. They haven't looked at the cities under, under our municipal code, we have the ability for, uh, improvement districts to be created. That hasn't necessarily been an option, um, but, uh, it's, that's, that was the option that was used fifty, sixty years ago, but more frequently, they've been using the Title Thirty-two districts to cover the, uh, bond, the cost of infrastructure.
So it's another feather, or arrow, or whoever, and they can use it or not. Okay, thank you.
And you sort of have to do that when you start the development, though, because it's done, the developer owns all the property, so they have an election, there's only one voter, and they, you know, it's a little tougher when you, you got neighborhoods already established and you're trying to put in a special district that will add, um, a cost to their lot. Uh, but the developers are able to do that when they're, they own the entire development and, you know, just, uh, spread it out in that fashion.
Larry?
Scott, I'm really glad to hear that standards are not, we're not lowering standards so that a select few developers get a bigger bottom line, basically. Uh, I'm on the board of the regional building, and we get complaints all the time. We gotta remember that, uh, some of the departments that we work with are enforcement agencies. We're enforcing, uh, uh, regulations that are not only city-